Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Regularly Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please prepare for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together tonight to do the business of this great city. Lord, I just pray that you would guide and direct in our deliberations and that you would give us your wisdom and insight. All these things we ask, in Jesus's name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Other clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Members Olson.
Welcome, everybody.
Verintine.
Here.
Gillett.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
And Mayor Jefferson.
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or edits? Seeing none, please vote.
The votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. We do have several speakers signed up this evening. Our first speaker is Tom Parsons. He's here to address counsel regarding the Inglewood Depot. Is Mr. Parsons here this evening? Oh, good evening, Mr. Parsons.
My name's Tom Parsons. I've been working on the Inglewood Depot project that we got through the good graces of the city. I'm gonna hold up just a picture that shows some of our rendering of the landscape plans that we were working on. People are welcome to look at this and talk about it. It's a historic building, and it's a building that we really treasure, and I'm sure the whole community here treasures it. Our aim for it is to build a community space in it that will be a letterpress museum that will preserve both the building and the history of letterpress printing, which I've been involved in for 35 years now. And I see it as just an amazing place. It's in a green belt next to the community garden across from Cushing Park. The upper level of it was 1915 train station. It got moved in 1994, and it's... The historic building was put on a new foundation underneath it. And in connection with it, part of our acquiring it requires that we have a preservation easement on it that's owned by the Colorado Historical Foundation. And the difficulty, we've been frustrated with the pace of getting this thing moving, getting the repairs done. The problem is that it was put on this new foundation. The lower level had no wall on the east side. It had a plywood fence. The building was never sealed to the ground from the upper part to the lower part. The access from the... For ADA access, the slopes are all wrong for getting there from the lower level to the upper level, or from the parking lot to the upper level or the lower level. There's just a whole myriad bunch of questions as to how to go about what to do with this, how to fix it and how to preserve it. And so what we've done is we've tried to take the challenges of it, of the building as it is, and look at what we can do, what we've gotta do first and what we've gotta do next, and strategize our fundraising efforts to reach that goal of having the building be preserved and have it be a viable building. So we need to fasten the thing to the ground. You can stand in the lower level and look up and see the sky between the two parts of the building. And when we originally approached the Colorado Historic Fund about funding for historic buildings, they said, "Well, that lower level is the new building. That's not historic, so we wouldn't fund that." And we said, "Well, what about the roof repairs? We need the roof repairs." Well, we already did that. They already paid for that. They paid to have it moved. So there are a bunch of reasons why we looked at it and said, "They said we might be able to help you fund the interior of the upstairs. Well, that's not gonna do us any good unless we get the lower level done first." So we've been going at this one step at a time. So our aims are to get the wall up on the lower level, to get the ramps ADA accessible, to regrade it so that it'll work that way. And then, at that point, we will be able to work on the interior of the upstairs and the restoration of the historic part of the building and use it for the purposes of the programs that we need. So there's a whole bunch of different steps involved. And we've also tried to strategize about the fundraising. My wife and I put up the money to buy it from the city, and we agreed to put up $100,000 to get this started. That's not gonna cover it. We know that. We knew that from the beginning. But how do we go about doubling that money or tripling that money and stuff? My approach has been to build the community around what our purpose is gonna be there. So we've been out doing workshops and events, not in the location. We can't work out of the building very well at this point. We can't occupy it. It's not a functional building for us. But we've been building the community, and that will lead to... What we have right now is a crowdsourced effort on Indiegogo, and we've got over 100 people that have donated to this, and we are raising money...
Mr. Parsons, I'm gonna get you to conclude your comments.
Sure. We're aiming at $70,000 for that campaign. That will lead to major donor campaign efforts, and I'm happy to answer questions about it. We hope to have the wall up by this summer, and we hope to have an event there next summer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See if counsel has any questions for you this evening. If you wouldn't mind sticking around, answering some questions, I'd appreciate it. Mayor Protam Gillett.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for coming up. You know, this has been almost, what, four years?
Three and a half years. We got it in October. Well, it's October, so...
You know, I remember this. As you know, this was very contentious at the time. A lot of people in the community were upset about the whole deal. And one of the things you promised right away was to ensure that the outside of the building would be kept up. You've done nothing to the roof or the siding other than cover over graffiti. And one of the things that you presented in your proposal was that your wife had $300,000 in funds. That's part of the material that you provided, showing that you had the sources and funds available to do this project. That's what you presented to counsel. We were... Ms. Olson was given that. Those of who were serving...
Your question here, Mr. Mayor Protam.
And the question is, why did you not at least fix the outside? The paint is chipped. It's in bad condition. The community's constantly asking why that thing is deteriorating with no input, no love or attention to it.
There's several inaccuracies in what you say. I'm sorry, but it's... We didn't say that we had $300,000 that we were putting up. We've always said we were offering $100,000 of our money. And we said we could raise money, and we've been doing that. We have been raising money for the project. And we have spent money on the roof repairs. The building was in worse shape than we thought. We have maintained the outside of the building. I agree it needs painting. There's still leaks in the gutter system. I've had that looked at by several of the roofers, and the last time I talked to them, they said, "We don't see any answer to that without changing the historic structure of the drainage on the outside of the building." And I talked to the... We have the preservation easement with the Colorado Historical Foundation. That was $8,000 to obtain that, which we paid for. And they said, "You can't change the gutter structure on it because that's part of the historic thing." So there's a whole bunch of problems. And I'm happy to sit down and go over these and talk about what we did or what we didn't do. And there's certainly things that we could do that we haven't done. I can just tell you, I'm determined to preserve the building and to do it in an orderly way, and I hope that we can achieve that. Whether we... I've heard lots of charges about what we didn't, what we promised and what we didn't do, and most of that is just not true. So if you wanna talk to me and go through what we actually said we would do, I can show you the documents, the proposal we went, and the things that were said about it at the time. I mean, I'm happy to go through that, but my goal is to make this thing happen, and that's where I am now. And I think we're accomplishing that right now. We've got funding going on. We've got construction going on right now out there. The construction... The wall is up in the lower level, under that blue tarp that's out there. Getting the permits for that, getting the drawings and all the details to do that part of it, which is the first thing we needed to do, has taken us this much time, so...
My final question is, when will it get painted? Can you get it painted now?
We could do that, yes.
A what date?
A what date?
We're going on almost four years. That's why I'm saying we need some date certain that the community can... I can not get questions and calls from constituents wanting why this building is...
We've had discussions about the painting and the problems, and the... The painting only involves getting the correct kind of paint and getting a professional painter to do it. That's some money that I thought we needed to put onto the... Get the wall done and get things so we weren't just dribbling our money out on things. If the painting is a real concern, I think the exterior appearance is definitely a concern. I've tried to maintain it, the yard work, the gardening. I don't know how long that takes, a month, two months? If that's a priority, I'm certainly willing to push it up in my priorities, too.
I just want it a timeframe, not just a day. Hopefully before next...
The problem I saw with the painting is that the roof gutter system is still leaking. The exterior, there's an overhang, and the gutter is higher than the drain. The drain going back from the gutter to the downspout is high... It's shaped like that instead of like that, and you can't just change it. And I tried to fix that. I tried to get people to look at that. And that means that that gutter has got drips in it, which is causing paint deterioration on the outside. I don't think it's structural. It's not on the interior of the building on that part of it. So I said, "Well, let's see if we can figure out how to get to that part before we paint it again, 'cause we'll just have to paint it all over again." But if, you know, I'm willing to paint it twice if that's what it's...
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to another question with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming. In the PDF that you emailed me earlier in the week, you said that the fundraising prior to 2017 was... You generated $40,000, including donations of over $40,000 prior to this year?
Well, my wife and I put up $100,000, and 75 of... 78 of that has already gone into investments in the property, in the building.
Right. That's in addition to the $100,000, right?
In addition to that, we have raised at least about $40,000.
Okay. And then my question is, have you applied for any grants? And if so, which ones?
Well, we have not applied for grants. We've done research on it, and we've got things lined up as to what we're gonna target and what we're gonna aim for. The only one that I... One that I mentioned before was the State Historic Fund. And at the time we got the property, I talked to them, and they were not willing to fund anything to do with the real needs that we had to do. They weren't gonna look at the roof, and they weren't gonna look at the connection with the foundation, or the access, or the walls. And that may have changed since then, and I need to go back and see that. There's some other grants that we're looking at that are possible, but I didn't wanna cite other people's money before I... Before we're really in the pipeline for it.
So you haven't applied to any?
No. Not like that. We have been getting donations, and some of those are fairly sizable, and we've been working on building the community to have a base to work from so that when we go to major donors or go to foundations, they understand that we've got a lot of support. I mean, if you've got ideas, I'm happy... We've got people that are grant writers and people that are able to do this, you know, this kind of work. It's just the timing doesn't seem like... If we had the money right now, it would still just be sitting in the bank, because maybe we would've painted. But the bulk of the money for the construction, that's been held up by the permits and the timing and the civil engineers and the fact that the contractors that we hired originally disappeared halfway through the process 'cause they got other jobs. I mean, it just... I could go into lots of details, but that's neither here nor there. So the money wouldn't be... If we got the grant, we wouldn't be ready to spend it yet, till right about now, when we're actually working on the construction. We've got... That's my thoughts on it, anyway.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'm willing to take ideas if people got other ideas.
Councilmember Yates, we're gonna keep moving. Councilmember Yates?
Mr. Parsons, I would like to take you up on that offer to meet you out at the location, 'cause I've never been through the building.
Love to.
And even though I did campaign about the situation, we're here today. And today, you know, the building's there, and we wanna see it. We wanna see it in its glory. So I have one question. Do you have water leaks on the inside of that building right now?
We've repaired the roof several times, and one of them... It's hard to tell because it doesn't... You don't see a leak until it's been raining like it was the other day. I went down and checked after that, and there was one leak in the inside, yeah, still. Now, that's been true for that building since about 1955. It was... Been used in storage for the train, you know, 20 years before it was moved, or 30 years, 50 years before it was moved. And so there's a lot of deterioration in the walls, and it was really hard for me to get the roofer to even believe when I said that this water's leaking here. He says, "Oh, that's just old stuff." I said, "No, it's coming down through here and through over here." And we got it fixed. One of them has still got a problem, one of the scuppers on the upper level. It's a very complicated roof, for what it's worth. I've had to learn crazy things that I never thought I would have to get into.
Thank you. Please contact me, and I would be more than happy to come out and...
Delighted, anytime. I mean, I can get there in 10 minutes from anywhere, so...
Thank you.
Somebody's got some time. I'd be happy to go through it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertha?
Who else is it besides you and your wife that are doing this? Do you have a board?
We have organized a nonprofit called the Inglewood Depot, Inc., and we also go by the name Letterpress Depot. We have a board, a very active board. We've been through a change in the board because it's now been several years. The board's serving two-year terms at this point. And I have Peter Bergman as a professor at Metro, who's our chair of the board. My wife Patty Heather Bergman has just joined our board. And our CPA accountant has just walked in the door. Alex Hernandez is on our board. She does program development for, right now, I think, for MCA, the museum downtown. And Ian... I'm losing my brain. My voice is... My throat's dry, and my brain's a little fried. But we have a board, and they're really active, and some of them couldn't be here tonight. I thought I'd just at least get them up to...
How many people sit on the board?
We have, I think, right now, 11 people on the board. We have a committee structure with another five or six...
I'm so sorry.
We have a committee structure with about five or six other very active people that are on the committee.
Who is your liaison with the city to make sure that the contract and the agreements that you made when you took over this land that was owned by the citizens of Inglewood, who is your contact with the city to make sure that you're in compliance? Who are you working with?
When we bought the building, there were basically two requirements. One was that we get a preservation easement. The other is that if we ever sell it, the city has right of first refusal. There's no other contract involved in this.
I didn't...
So it's up to me to be in touch with people. And I thought, after the struggle that we had going through this and the disappointment people had over it, that I should just back off and let it sit and do my job on it. And it's taken me this long, and I've been frustrated that I haven't been out here. And we do want to make better contact with people. I mean, I've been immediately available at any time.
I apologize. I was just asking, who are you working with, with the city?
With the city? Well...
Who do you communicate with, with what's going on with that property, with the city? That's all.
I think she's talking about permits and things like that in your DTR.
Do you keep anybody informed in the city about what you're doing and how you're handling that public piece of property that you got?
It's not a public piece of property. I'm sorry. It's a privately owned piece of property.
Are you working with anybody in the city? That's all they needed was... Are you communicating with anybody?
Yes.
Who?
It depends what it is we're doing. If we're going to get permits, we've dealt with the building department, the engineering department. We've had surveyors out working on stuff. We did do a DRT meeting. We did one of those before we started, and a secondary... A second meeting after we got the property. Brooke Bell was our contact at that time. It's...
If you currently don't have anybody that you directly report to or are working with with the city, that's fine. You don't have anybody, that's okay. I don't want four-year history of everybody you talked to. I just wanted to know if you had somebody you were currently dealing with, with the city?
Do you have a recommendation? I mean, if there's somebody...
You just tended to answer the question, and I think if we're okay, we can move on. Do you have any further questions?
If it's not being answered, so it's okay. It's fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
How much money have you put into this project to this point?
I personally... My wife and I put in $78,000 to the construction and the purchase and the permits and the roof and the grading and the surveying, the engineers that are involved, the architects that are involved.
So you've already spent $78,000?
I have spent $78,000 on the project.
And that work has already been completed? All of those things have been completed?
No, no, because they're drawings and designs. And we had to stop and get... This last year, we had to get a landscape architect when we went to the city about getting permits to put up the wall. They said, "You need to have a site plan that includes landscape architect." So I had to stop and pay for that, so the trees aren't...
Actually, so what you're telling me is that you have set aside $78,000?
No. That's gone out of my bank account, and it's gone to people that have worked on the project.
Okay. Thank you.
And in addition to that, we have put up another $20,000 to the depot as a donation to the depot over those years, so that the depot has money now in the account to spend on it. And we've raised another $20,000 in other donations that is in our bank account for this first phase of the project. Right now, we're doing... Working a crowdsourced effort that has a goal of $70,000 to raise enough to get through all of that and into the next phase of this project.
Okay. Thank you. I can see that this is a huge project. Thank you.
It is, and I...
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you for coming. And full disclosure, I had quite a long conversation with Tom today about where they've been, where they're going, and their overall plan. So many of the questions you asked were the same ones I asked then. My big question is, at this point, what can the city do in terms of the departments that we have to help you get a full understanding of what is required by this property? It sounded to me from you today that surprises come your way, and you don't know that it needed to be this or that, and then all of a sudden you have to spend more money on something. What do we need to do? What would you find useful? Could we set up another team that meets with you, goes through every possible thing that you might have to be raising money for?
I'd be happy to do that. I don't...
Well, I'm not sure I want you to be happy with doing it. I'm asking you what you need.
I'm available to do that. What I need... What I needed was the permits to go through so that we could get the wall started. And instead, we had to stop and do the architectural, the landscape planning on it, which I understood we needed, but I didn't know we needed to have the signed drawings from the landscape architect. I mean, some of those kind of details, which I... Maybe somebody with more experience in construction would have had, but I, you know, I'm learning.
Just for the public's record, do you have a general contractor who's working on this with you that has an overall scope of what this project is?
We do have a general contractor now, yes.
I would love to see us do something to help you go through everything. Would you be willing to meet with the city and another team to go over everything again and figure out what are the stages of things, what things are gonna trip you up along the way that maybe you or your contractor don't know?
Yeah. I mean, one of the things I've...
Is it just a yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Let's make sure we can do that with them.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for being here. I really appreciate it. I just have a couple of quick questions as well. How much money do you need to bring this project to fruition, to your full dream?
And that's a tough question. We're talking double, triple, triple what we've had originally on it. It's the way I've seen the fundraising has been in stages, just like the construction. So I haven't been projecting it... If I start thinking about what this is gonna cost, this is gonna cost the rest of my life, is what it's gonna cost.
Fair enough. And thank you for the email that you had sent over that contained just for the public's information, some information about where they were at in different phasing. I think what you described in your email is Phase 2 with some exterior improvements. You know, is my guess is probably what the council is kind of wanting to get towards, to get through Phase 1 and Phase 2. How much did you have funding, do you have to have?
Well, right now, we've got a campaign for $70,000 that's coming in, and we're hitting major donors after that. So I'm guessing we're probably gonna raise $150,000 above what we started. That's just my guess on it. And I think that would easily take us into those things. Some of the grant proposals are gonna be possible once we get the... And there are other grant proposals that are possible for capital expenses, but those haven't been visible to me before.
At this time, do you feel confident that your project would benefit from some grant monies that might be available?
Sure.
Are you set up to apply for those grants currently with the structure of the organization and the ownership of the organization?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I'm sure we'll have some additional council comments and discussion here after the remainder of presentations. Thank you again for being here.
Happy to talk. Thanks.
We're gonna move on to our next speaker, which is Sophia Montoya, which is an Inglewood high school student. I don't believe I see her tonight. Is there anybody from FBLA or from the schools here tonight? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to our third speaker, which is Lisa... Would you like to come up? Okay, I'm sorry. To talk a little bit about FBLA?
No, no, she's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lisa Spiegel, yes, I apologize. An Inglewood resident, addressing counsel regarding a lack of upkeep for businesses. Good evening, ma'am. Sorry about the confusion.
My name is Lisa Spiegel, and I just want you to know I love Inglewood. That's why I'm here. I think that's why all of us are here. I'm hoping we can help her, since we all tout to keep Inglewood beautiful. My husband and I have lived in Inglewood since 1998. We first brought our daughter home in 2001. We've watched our daughter and our city change over the last 15 years. Guess which one we are proud of? I have effectively given up on the neighborhoods themselves, as I realize it is a real ebb and flow. One house decides to clean up their property, the house next door decides... The house next door decides to cultivate weeds, or weed, sorry. They, right behind us, they're doing it, but that's legal, so. And the house next door to that gets scraped and an enormous duplex is constructed. That is for another meeting, so I won't get into that. What I'm trying to say is our residents do the best they can for the most part. As for the businesses along Broadway and the surrounding areas, from the felt MAC outlet area to the Marshmallow Bank and back again, that's one of my biggest pet peeves is the big white bank that's now brown. That, you know which one I'm talking about? The big bank across from the Army Navy surplus?
Big bank.
It used to be white. Twenty years ago, it was white, so that just bugs me. So I'm just wondering what the standard is for the Keep Inglewood Beautiful. Do they get ticketed? Do they get cited? I know as a resident, I get cited, my husband and I, we get cited every May for our alley weeds. But I look at the businesses and it's just, and it's not all of them. Some of them are great. We love your place. I actually emailed the corporate office of Jimmy John's to complain about their property just to see what would happen because, you know, why not? I'm a resident here. And I got a response that said, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention." Okay, that was like three weeks ago and it's still crappy out there. So my husband and I, we walk all over the town a lot and we've actually seen employees at Panda Express picking up trash, which was like shocking. Not because it was Panda Express, because we just don't see anybody outside taking care of their property. I tried to contact Advanced Auto Parts. That's impossible. I don't know if they actually have somebody that's at the top. Let's see. We have picked up our fair share of trash around town, but we're just like, if nobody else is doing it, why should we care? And a lot of it is, I drove through town today and I was like, that doesn't look bad anymore. But if you walk by it, it's awful. So take a walk. It's interesting. I've also noticed that trash cans tend to overflow. Drove by the Gothic today, another overflow. That was like at two o'clock. And their trash can was still overflowing from the concert the night before. Let's see. We've also noticed, and this probably sounds really bad because I- the ground is dirty. I know that sounds weird. But you walk by somewhere and you're just like, I don't want to walk here. It's so disgusting. So I just think, why not a little bit of water? You know, and I think that building is called the Colorado Bank and Trust. I'm not sure exactly. Is that what it's called? Yeah, that's just so bizarre, bizarre to me. So I go back to, you know, we get in trouble for weeds, but yet they can have a disgusting looking building. So that's the businesses part. And one other thing I want to talk about this, it has nothing to do with really a business, is who would I go to about having a four-way stop put in at the Bates and Bannock intersection? Because the apartments and development that's going on way at the end, is the traffic is just starting already. And so a four-way stop would be fantastic, but I don't know who I would talk to about that. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll see if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Gates.
For your four-way stop, you would want to show up at the E-Tech or Inglewood Transportation Committee?
Oh, okay.
This is our question portion, but please proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I'm sorry. No question.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. And we will get to council comments at the end, once everybody has a chance to talk. Councilmember Martinez?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. I am the liaison to the Keep Inglewood Beautiful Board and they do a litter cleanup every year. So if there are particular intersections that you're seeing more litter in, let me know and I'll pass that along to the group and make sure that's included in our litter cleanup. Is there a particular intersection or intersections that you mentioned that you've seen a lot of litter in?
Mostly just the businesses themselves. So, I mean, that's cool that they have a once-a-year litter pickup, but it's like all year long, it's just bad. I mean, the one that sticks out, oh, I forgot to mention Walgreens. Oh, my gosh, that's so awful. It's got litter. It's got, the weeds are like, you know. I mean, I know we don't live in Highlands Ranch and I don't want to live in Highlands Ranch. So I don't need it to be perfect, but-
Which Walgreens are you talking about? The Bellevue or the Dartmouth?
Dartmouth and, yeah. So, I mean, that's cool and I'll come and help pick up trash. That would be great. But once a year isn't enough. I mean, if the citizens are doing it, that's fantastic. But are the businesses being held accountable to do it themselves throughout the year? It just seems really weird.
Thank you. We'll answer your questions when we get to a council comment. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Spiegel, for coming and speaking this evening. Move on to our third speaker of the evening. This is Joe Anderson, an Inglewood resident, here to address council regarding Giving Heart and homeless issues. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I just want to talk briefly about, give you an update on what Giving Heart has been doing, kind of on their behalf. I followed up last meetings. One of you suggested that we contact the Impact Team. I contacted the Impact Team. They've signed an officer to the case and I've been in touch with him. They're presently doing a little research on what the statistics are before Giving Heart moved in and what it looks like after. So we'll have a little bit better picture of what actually has happened on that block in terms of crime or calls or anything like that. And then in addition, I know the people who work daily at Giving Heart are doing the best they can to build goodwill in the neighborhood and along that block and to also do the best they can to make sure the homeless folks move along after their services are done. But the main reason I want to address you is on behalf of our pastors group, Unite Inglewood. And I think it just, this whole issue just kind of woke up the sense that, wow, we haven't really communicated very well what the churches are actually doing in Inglewood for the homeless population and what our aims are with that. And we just want to have a sense that council and the city staff and anybody, we want to be on the team together. We want to work with city to just address the issue of homelessness as best we possibly can. So I want to read a letter from Unite Inglewood, which is kind of our group of pastors that meet regularly, and then answer any questions you have after that.
Is this the letter in our package?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Dear council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. We are Unite Inglewood, an alliance of churches and ministries operating in Inglewood. We understand that serving on council is often difficult and thankless work, so we want to begin by thanking you for your public service. While we're all occupied with our respective churches and ministries, several of us keep an eye on city affairs and you are often in our prayers. We've noticed that as a council, you've been careful not to rush into decisions but have taken time to hear all sides and make decisions with the long-term good of the city in mind. We're writing now because we want to draw attention to the council's attention to the problem of homelessness in our community. With housing costs skyrocketing, twenty-five percent of Colorado renters spend more than fifty percent of their income on rent. The average waiting list time for affordable housing is two to five years. And as much as we'd like to all believe that get a job is the whole answer, it's not. In March, Colorado Public Radio reported that thirty percent of Denver's homeless population is working full-time. We want to see homelessness ended in our community, period. To that end, we work with Giving Heart to connect our homeless population with day labor opportunities, job training, and through Housing 180 Transitional Housing. The churches supply volunteers, funds, and networking, but Giving Heart provides overall leadership and functions as a clearinghouse for connecting our homeless folks with the resources that really change their situation. To meet urgent needs in the meantime, our churches also operate food banks and provide meals so people don't starve. In cooperation with the Severe Weather Shelter Network, we house people on the worst nights of the year so they don't freeze to death on the sidewalk. We offer medical care treating simple problems before they compound and cost thousands of dollars at the ER. None of this comes cheap. Our people give sacrificially of their time, energy, and money to make these things happen. We are doing what we can, but the problem is way bigger than us. We need the city's cooperation. We've been able to work closely with the city on the Neighborhood Rehab Project and other initiatives. We'd like to have that same kind of working relationship on this. Frankly, helping a homeless person become self-sufficient, job, apartment, and habits that sustain a productive life is a lot harder than cleaning up brush on someone's property, but that's all the more reason for us to work together. Nobody's going to solve this one on their own. We thank God for you as city council and we're particularly grateful for your track record of careful consideration and deliberate action. We're here to work with you in tackling this difficult problem. May God give us all wisdom and discernment as we work together. And I'll just read each name blessing from the United Inglewood pastors and churches. Joe Anderson, Unite Inglewood. Chris Carr, Spirit of Hope, United Methodist. Dave Cheadle, Center Point Community. Bart Ford, from the Lighthouse. Mark Hallick, Calvary, Inglewood. Nathan Hoag, Sacred Grace, Inglewood. Tim Nichols, Unite Inglewood. Peter Olson, the Lighthouse. Dan Ritchie, Sanctuary Christian Fellowship. Jeremy Salt, Mosaic Church. Billy Waters, Wellspring, Inglewood. And Harvey Whitmire, Crossfire Church.
Thank you, sir. See if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. Appreciate your coming. And particularly, I thought there was a group like this, but I wasn't sure who all is engaged. Do you have a group like this that you have assembling with businesses that have been concerned in the area?
So the people who work at Giving Heart have been going door-to-door trying to find ways to build relationships. There's a lot of tension there. And I don't know that they've had a lot of success, but I can't really speak much to that as I haven't been involved in that part.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No. We have an appointment to meet and maybe you can provide me more information then if you can, address it right now. What exactly is Unite Inglewood?
Unite Inglewood is just our network of pastors. It's really just a church network. We've done, we meet together monthly to pray together and then we have done various initiatives together in the past, including we used to do a service around this time of year, every year, United Church Service. And then we've done the Neighborhood Rehab Project together.
So Unite Inglewood is kind of a subset, kind of a subcommittee of a group of churches? It's not its own organization?
No, it's not. It's actually a DBA of another nonprofit that I run, so it does have organizations.
And it's a deviation of what other nonprofit?
DBA of Headwaters Christian Resources, which is an organization.
Okay. Because I'd like to get some more information because when we're using terms like that, I'd like to know who the organizations are because I had never really heard of that before. The Giving Heart, you have listed here more than when Dave came last time. He gave us some of the things that he was doing. Is there a chance that either when we meet or you could give the council a little bit more definitive what their mission is and what they're doing? Because this is different than what he said he was doing for Giving Heart. And so if there's other organizations that are working or there's a conglomeration of organizations, I need to know who's doing what and what they're responsible for because when Dave came, he said he was only working those Saturday and Tuesday. So, and that they weren't doing anything for the homeless, that was somebody else. So if we could maybe get, is it possible to get this kind of sorted out? Who all is doing what a little bit clearer?
I can give you a quick summary here in terms of Giving Heart, if that'd be helpful.
If it's going to be in conflict with what he said, then maybe I would just like to get something, what your organization's doing or your subset organization?
I'm here on behalf of Unite Inglewood and Giving Heart is a piece of what we would consider our network in the city. But Unite Inglewood is just a very, it's really just a word. I mean, we don't have any money. We don't have, Unite Inglewood itself doesn't have a board. We haven't operated, we haven't, you know, we just kind of, we work together. We're people who come together and work together and Giving Heart is a part of that. So when I say all these other things we're doing, that's also, of these ten churches listed here, many of them operate food banks and offer meals and a variety of services. And Giving Heart serves as a place to connect with homeless folks and push, and direct them to other ministries that other, or other Unite Inglewood organizations operate in the city.
Well, if you could just have some of that information when we meet, maybe I'll understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
So how do you envision that the city can help with the homeless situation?
I don't know. I think that's a longer-term conversation. I know we'd love to just get people together and start having that conversation. What does the big vision look like? How can, you know, we want to work with the police department. How can we make sure that the churches are doing things that help the homeless and also that we're just working together and sharing a common vision for the good of the city? And I think there is that common vision already. It's just a matter of how can we put the pieces of the puzzle together in such a way that we're more effective?
Okay, so for right now, it's just the discussion piece?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate you coming and speaking this evening. We'll move on to our next speaker, who's Art Emerson, addressing council regarding West Adriatic Place. Good evening, Mr. Emerson.
Thank you, council. I'm here tonight to follow up on a request I've made of council to meet with city staff in a work session. I'm having problems with West Adriatic Place. It's a six-hundred-foot street right away, which is not in service, not built out. And it is making my land and property useless. So I'm twenty-five years fighting the battle. There's a lot going on now. This is my third trip before council. I'm seeking a chance to talk to you and go through city response and my questions to city staff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Emerson at this point? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Emerson, for coming and speaking. We will have some comments here at the end and council response to public comment. Moving on to our next speaker. Thank you, is Kathy Woody, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding a citywide immigration policy. Good evening, Mrs. Woody.
Good evening. And you all have a copy of my statements and att-
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Woody. I have lived at thirty-eight, eighty-eight South Grant for thirty-nine years. I am here to speak with you once again about the city's plan, policy, statement regarding our undocumented residents. I spoke with you last December, asking for your consideration of Inglewood becoming a sanctuary city. I am no longer asking for that declaration. It is unclear, first of all, what that label means and in addition, it raises many red flags. But I am still committed to making my city, our city, a safe and welcoming place for all of our residents who are able to live and work here without fear. There are other aspects of this issue that need to be thought through. First, conflicting policy statements. It would appear that two written immigration statements are not in alignment, that of the Inglewood School District and the Inglewood Police Department. And I printed out both of those statements. The School District uses statements such as, "Protect the constitutional and legal rights of all of our students." "Protection of students' civil rights." Whereas the Police Position Statement uses words like, "To work cooperatively with ICE." Provide legal, I'm sorry, provide logistical support whenever asked. Also, the Police Statement on Immigration Law indicates it as a product of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. However, when I showed that statement to Chief White in Denver, he said he was a member of that association. He had never seen that statement, nor would he have signed off on it. To attribute this statement to all Colorado chiefs of police seems misleading. When I brought this to the attention of City Manager Keck, he said he felt that Chief Collins should look at tailoring a policy statement that is more germane to Inglewood. He went on to say that Mayor Jefferson had asked him to work with Chief Collins to see if an Inglewood-specific policy could be drafted. This was in February. When I checked the Inglewood Police Department website this afternoon, the above statement is still there, unchanged. Second, uniformity. If an Inglewood-specific policy is decided on, it is important that all city officials and staff be familiar with it. I taught for thirty-five years and participated in well over one hundred fire drills. Was there ever a fire in any of my school buildings? No. However, we were all prepared. Everyone in those buildings, from preschool through office staff to all students and teachers, knew exactly what to do in the event of a fire. We were prepared. Is the city of Inglewood prepared if ICE agents become active in our community? Will all city employees know of our city's policies in these matters? The ACLU is currently very active in suing cities that step on the civil rights of individuals. Can we, can our city afford a lawsuit? Third, city attorney. I would suggest that City Attorney Brown be involved in any revision of the city's immigration policy. Fourth, unfunded mandate. Is the federal government expecting our local police force to inform them of undocumented workers living in- workers living in our community? I went on a ride-along with one of our officers as part of Inglewood Police Citizens Academy I was attending. It is obvious that our police officers already have a full plate, and by diverting them to enforce federal mandates concerning undocumented workers, our own city's safety will suffer. Fifth, up and down the front range. Two weeks ago, one of our city, one of our members, Dana Clark, provided you with an attachment to her remarks listing some of the municipalities in our state that are dealing with this same issue. I also have attached my notes. As you can see, Inglewood is not alone in grappling with this issue. The ACLU has provided nine talking points, which Dana shared with you on May 1st. If you would like another copy, I can provide one. As you can see from my attachment, county sheriffs-
Mrs. Woody, can I get you to conclude your comments?
Mm-hmm. Yes, finally. And this should be stated for the record. In no way should a city policy of any kind protect those who engage in criminal activity, immigration laws or civil laws, not criminal.
Thank you, ma'am. See if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight. We'll move on to our next speaker, is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Happy birthday, Inglewood. On May 13th, we had our 114th birthday. And Inglewood is a really-
Are you going to sing, Doug?
You don't want me to do that.
Don't forget to wish our city manager a happy birthday as well. I apologize for interruption.
And happy birthday to you.
He's not 114, though.
Not quite that old, no.
Inglewood is a really special place. We care deeply for each other and are deeply committed to our town. We love this place, and there's a spirit of independence and individualism and a strong sense of private property rights. There's been conflicting visions since 1903. Tom Skerritt liked Inglewood described as a grocery store, five bars, and two sporting houses. Jacob Jones had a different vision. Let's have a city with families. In 1927, John Simon, the fellow Simon Sanders is named after, was the mayor, and he was feeling uncomfortable that Inglewood could survive as a small city and carried on a campaign to have Inglewood annexed to Denver. After a contentious vote, Inglewood decided to remain independent. This is Inglewood, not Denver. Then, across the decades, there have been several discussions to merge Sheridan and Inglewood into a new city, Sherwood. But both Inglewood and Sheridan residents affirmed their unique personalities. And then, there was an attempt in the 1990s to impose covenants, that Inglewood looked junky, it needed to be cleaned up. Some felt the need to introduce covenants to clean up the city. Trailers and RVs and old hobby project cars and business-labeled vehicles that people drove home were all put on the list of people who needed to get tickets from the code enforcement guys. The residents got upset with the rules. People spoke at the council meetings and tried to work with the city. The voters finally decided to make a change in the law. A group of us, in 2011, wrote Initiative 2D at past 65, 35 percent. We believed that Inglewood residents would be responsible enough to take care of their own stuff and respect their neighbors. With liberty comes responsibility. We've discovered that there's a problem with the Inglewood municipal code. Section 15-9-1 and 2, there on the back of that handle that I gave you, are in conflict with Initiative 2D. 15, 9, 1, and 2 are subservient to the citizen initiative, and they, those two sections of our code, I don't know if they got overlooked as staff was meshing together the citizen initiative and existing code at the time. Specifically, 2D did not address inoperable vehicles, because it did not make any difference whether they worked or not, as we were writing the ordinance. I ask you to fix those two parts and bring them into alignment with 2D. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Mayor Proton Gillett?
Mr. Cohn, thank you again for coming and making such a wonderful presentation. You know, I've been doing a lot of, I'm looking into this very situation, and what I don't think the voters, and help me understand if you think this is true or not, I don't think the voters wanted unlimited inoperable or junkyards in all of our lawns. Did you think that that's what they meant?
Well, that was the concern expressed by some councilors at the time we were bringing the initiative forth, that Inglewood would become this giant junkyard. There'd be bulldozers in the front yards and just, it would be a giant mess. We were confident that people would act responsibly. Would I want to have a junkyard next to me? No. If my neighbor had, was working on a couple of old cars that he wanted to make into artwork show carriers, I think that'd be awesome. If he had three, I don't know what the number would be. In the Initiative 2D, it specifically says that y'all cannot limit the number of cars per household, not per property, not per home, but per household to two.
But we could limit it to one. So, there needs to be-
I think that'd be a bad idea.
There needs to be some cleanup. So, would you think the community would have an issue saying that people should probably have registered cars in their front and whatever they want in their back? Or do you think that it's, we should just, are you advocating to, that no one should register their vehicles, bring everybody's stuff on? You think that's what we want for-
I think 2D, the initiative in 2011, is really clear on that.
But it's sort of nebulous.
Well, in the sense that inoperable was not discussed. As we discussed it going into the election, we, the writers of the initiative, specifically decided it wasn't necessary to include that, because either inoperable or operable would be acceptable. If you were working on a hobby car, and the motor's out because you had to get the motor fixed, that's okay.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, any further questions?
Oh, thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrington?
While it specifically states that it cannot be limited to two, cannot be limited to two vehicles, is what it says.
That's correct.
And, but it does say that, you know, where it can be parked.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, we don't, the initiative did not specify where on your property.
No, not where on your property.
You can't park it on the grass.
Right.
If you want to park it in a spot where, when the rain comes, it's going to sink in the mud, you can do that once.
The situation, you do know that, do you know that the ordinances for anything that's hazardous or nuisance, they ended up still applying, so that if something becomes something where it's a health hazard, or the vermin get in there, or there's some other issue going on, that that still does apply as well?
Well, I think if the raccoons took up residence in my hobby car, I'd probably have to deal with them.
They've been taking up residence on some on the street occasionally. The situation that brought this to your attention, do you know how long that situation's been going on?
A very long time.
How long?
According to Judge Atencio, upwards of 20 years.
Okay. So, this ordinance didn't create that situation, you don't think? This ordinance has only been in effect since 2011 or '13?
2011.
Okay.
Did not create it, no.
No.
What I've discovered is, there's a small number of people, that it doesn't matter what the code rules are, they're not going to follow them. They didn't follow the ones in 1984, or 2001, or any of the ones since then, or any of the ones will be written in the future. There's this many, this many people in our city of 30,000, who are just, maybe we need to do what the city of Colorado Springs did with Nikola Tesla, buy them a one-way train ticket someplace and wish them a safe journey.
I'll look at that petition when you get it ready.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Cohn? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cohn, for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Koween Dickerson, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding initiatives and ordinances. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
Good evening, Koween Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street here in Inglewood. I'd like to thank Doug Cohn for the history lesson. As usual, he hits, he gives us all kinds of good information, and I agree wholeheartedly with his analysis. Note that he is one of the authors of the initiative, and he knows the intent and reasoning behind 2D. In support of his analysis, I offer the following. In 2011, 2D citizen initiative was passed. Many times, several of you assert, and I think rightly, that the will of the voters is inviolate, and what they pass cannot be changed or altered and has to go into the code as it was voted on. You have said that about the recreational marijuana ordinance, the police bond issue, and the sale of city property. Yet, I have heard rumblings that you want to put another initiative on the ballot to clean up the language of 2D. Please note, one, the language was approved by the city attorney at that time. Two, the intent is what matters, per our new city attorney, and that intent was to protect citizens' property rights and forbid the city from limiting the number of vehicles on private property. The suggestion was made that because, well, you can't limit it to two, well, we can limit it to one. Well, people had three cars, and you were limiting them to two and ticketing them for the third, so, no, it can't go to one. Code enforcement has been violating the intent of 2D by ticketing people who have more than one vehicle that has expired registration or needing repair to operate, even when parked behind six-foot privacy fencing. Unlike every other initiative, 2D never was put in the Muni code as an ordinance, though some language referring to the private property and parking was removed to reconcile with part of 2D. 15, 9, 1, and 2 should have been removed from the Muni code for being in violation of 2D and replaced with 2D, which supersedes it and is of the same subject matter. I cannot find that 15, 9, 1, or 2, or any ordinance, says anything about expired registration or unregistered vehicles being by definition non-operable, therefore, subject to limitation. Yet, code enforcement tickets vehicles as non-op if the registration is expired, even if on private property, even if screened. Our property rights are absolute, per the Constitution, and yes, we have to live with, we have to live with each other, all the more reason not to overrule or attempt to overrule the will of the voters. Code enforcement should not be allowed or instructed to enforce voided ordinances or ordinances that should have been repealed. Put 2D in the code in place of 15-9-1 and 2. Change the thrust and attitude and power of code enforcement to one advisory and helpful, not heavy-handed enforcement of violations of individual property rights. Repeal the ordinances that are contrary to the will of the people and are contradictory, which are a lot of them.
Thank you. Any questions from council, from Mrs. Dickerson? Seeing none, I'll thank you, Koween Dickerson, for coming and speaking this evening. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 7. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. Tonight, we do have two speakers. Our first speaker is Peter Bergman, here to speak about the topic of Inglewood Depot Building. Good evening, Mr. Bergman.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Mostly, just wanted to come and introduce myself to you today. So, I am the president of the Board of Inglewood Depot, Inc., which is the nonprofit that Tom and Patty originally founded to help with administering the building and running ancillary mission of programming and classes and letterpress preservation. And I'm the person who emailed you that PDF, and I would just like to say I'm available anytime to talk. You can just simply reply to that email. I'm willing to come to your office and talk to you. I am a professor, so summer's free, so it's something we can talk about at your convenience. Also, Heather Link Bergman, who's right behind me, is willing to be our primary liaison for any discussions or questions you have. So, if you do have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. We don't immediately know the answer. We will find out the answer right away and get back to you. And I just want to echo, well, first, before I get into that, I do have an itemized list of expenses paid by Tom and Patty Parsons on the depot property to date that Tom had and perhaps Councilmember Russell, you might be interested in it. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to hand it to-
To the city clerk.
But I just want to echo something that Councilmember Yates said. Regardless of where we were initially on this issue and all the struggles that we've gone through as a board and organization with contractors and getting ready for where we are today, and regardless of where anyone was on this issue, we are here today, and we all have a shared common goal, and that's to see a restored Inglewood Depot building in the shortest amount of time possible. Other things that happened today, from our perspective, we did raise $1,183 today. We raised $500 in just the hour before we came to this meeting. That's bringing us to a total of $20,306 raised since the first day of this month. And we are very active in that fundraising campaign, and also, the wall went up today. But more importantly, we got a chance to talk to you, we got a chance to update you and think about the future. And Mayor Proton Gillett, I'm totally with you on the painting. Ask anyone on the board, that's something I keep asking about and something I want to take care of as soon as possible, just because I think it's a really outward and visible sign to the community that we're interested and engaged in the building. And I think we want to make an effort to better communicate. On that PDF, you have my contact information, you have Tom's, you have Heather's. Councilmember Yates will definitely reach out to you about doing a walkthrough in the building. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Any questions from city council? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you again, and it was good to talk to you this afternoon. One of the questions I asked you earlier today, and then I'll ask in front of everybody here, is, yes, we are starting today as we reconnect over this, and I hope that people in the room who are particularly interested in historic preservation really want to see this project be successful. So, my question to you is, what can we do, not just from the city's end, but people in the room, to do to get engaged, to make sure that you, that this project is successful, that we not sabotage it, but we make, you know, hold your feet to the fire a bit?
Right.
Which I think we should have done a bit more earlier, but what else could we be involved in? Can people be on your board? Could people be volunteers and paint? Could, are there things that can be done?
Yeah, and I will say, based on some of the comments, I think one thing that makes a project like this successful is oversight. So, simply holding our feet to the fire, I think, does make it successful. It motivates us, it makes us understand what the concerns of the community are, and because our goal is to be a community organization, it's key to get that input. We do have an open board, so we invite volunteers, volunteers participate in committees. Those people can join the board through a formal process we have that we're happy to go over with anybody. Likewise, anyone who has an interest in the building or historic preservation in Inglewood is welcome to contact me. I know I gave all of you my contact information, but if any of your constituents want that, feel free to pass that on to them, or they can contact us through letterpressdepot.com. And I think there are some specific things that we can talk about and address, and maybe have a kind of offline meeting about ways that the city can specifically help us and residents can help us, but that's something we would very much welcome. I think you made some great points today when we talked on the phone about getting people from the community more involved in our board, in addition to better communicating what our progress is. And I think there were a lot of good suggestions made when there were comments made, Tom was speaking, and those are all things that we want to take advantage of. I think itemizing them out and going through them all tonight is probably beyond the scope of this meeting, and I think it's probably several more meetings. So, let's have those meetings. Or maybe you could- So let's have those meetings, or maybe you could suggest people that we should meet with that could, you know, some, some suggestions, or at least tell us what their concerns are. Does that...
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Tom said that the board recently reorganized. How long have you been on the board?
I was a member of the board from the beginning. I was somewhat involved in education issues, so I'm a design and art instructor. About a year and a half ago, October, is when I became the president of the board. At that point, we had four or five people leave the board, and we got new people, and we've continued to add a couple of new people.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for coming tonight. Could you email us an electronic copy also of what you gave us?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, did you say your, your meetings are open to the public? You're open to having anyone come to those meetings? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, so we, you know, we don't, maybe this is a fault of ours, we don't tend to assume that the public is interested in coming to the meeting, but yes, we have had people contact us and say they're interested in the project. Oftentimes, that's from the perspective of them being interested in what the museum, ultimate museum's mission is. They're printing people or artists, and absolutely, they come to the meetings. Sometimes they keep coming, sometimes they volunteer for committees. Really, what we encourage people to do is maybe come to a meeting, get to know us, identify a committee or an area of interest, and then meet with that committee, because that's really the process of joining the board. But absolutely, we've had people come and sit in on our meetings. We had a woman who is currently with the Gates Foundation, who's interested in capital campaigns. She came in, sat in on a meeting, and told us when we get to that phase that she'd be interested in helping us and coming back, so yes, absolutely. And actually, to your earlier question about grants, that is something that we are planning on doing. So right now, we're in a process of kind of lining the ducks up. So the state historic fund grant deadline is in October, and we definitely plan on looking into that and applying for that. So large grants, and then there are smaller grants. We were just talking before the meeting about a small construction grant that maybe we would approach, but that's part of the long-term plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Bergman? Thank you for having us speaking tonight. Final unscheduled speaker is Idemay Nickel, here to speak about Veterans Memorial. Good evening, Mrs. Nickel.
Good evening, council. My name is Idemay Nickel, and I live at 4740 South La Penn Street. I just want to remind everyone about the Veterans Memorial, which will be on the 28th, and I'm asking the citizens to please pick up a brochure on your way out, and you can look at our big poster there. And the rest of my time, I would like to speak regarding the depot. I want to remind City Council, and I want to remind our citizens of our community. The night the council was going to select and award the depot, Mr. Parsons came to the podium, and he said, "I do not have to get a 501(c)(3). I do not have to get any grants. My family has $300,000 that we can start the renovation immediately." And therefore, all of the council, with the exception of Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Gillett, voted against it. All the rest of the council voted for it. Now, I do want to point out that Rita Russell, Lorette Barantine, Steve Yates, and Amy Martinez was not on the council at that time. The other council have left, and we have new council now. But I did want to, I did want to get that out to the public, because somebody has forgotten exactly what they told the council the night the council awarded the depot. Thank you.
Thank you. Might have a question for you, Councilmember Olson?
Yes, thank you for coming. I wanted to ask you, and this is, this is, if you don't want to answer it because you want to think about it, that's fine. We are where we are today, and Mr. Parsons owns the building. Would you or the Inglewood Housing Authority, or Housing Authority, Historic Society be interested at all in helping them make sure that they continue on and have a successful project, or would you rather not be engaged in it?
I cannot answer that.
Okay.
I'm just one member of a board.
Sure. Would you personally be willing to talk with them, to give some ideas on what you think should happen?
I would have to think very hard about that. I think what Mr. Parsons gave the council was very misleading, and he was awarded the depot, and I don't think it's fair to us, and I don't think it was fair to the citizens.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'll thank you, Idemay, for being here and speaking this evening. That moves us on to council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off this evening? Councilmember Yates?
Okay. For Lisa Spiegel, you might want to get a pencil out for this, and for Mr. Vermin, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on the 8th of next month at 6:00 PM on the third floor. That's the place to bring up the issue about the four-way stop sign. They're also starting to talk about functionality of our alleys, so if you want to give your two cents about that, we'd love to hear from you. So then for Mr. Berg, Vermin? Vermin? Is that it? Bergman. I didn't put the G in there when I wrote it. My phone number, the best way to get ahold of me is through my cellphone. You can either text me or call me, but my number is 303-720-9817. I do have a construction background, so I might be able to give you a few little suggestions on how to expedite some of these things and some of the things that you may have to really pay attention to right now, because if it's not dry, that will cost you thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars later.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Gillett?
Thank you, everybody who's coming tonight. Just to clarify with Mr. Parsons, although I do agree that the agreement was for the $100,000, there was a financial statement provided to council showing $300,000 available in account, and that's what the, I went back and looked at the meeting notes for the committee who decided who to give it to, and the, one of the things the committee said is they had seen the financial statements, and their decision for supporting them was based on that. So those, those were not, you know, we just didn't pull that number out of the air. That's, that's a number that was provided to council at the time to show that there would be no issue in getting this going, that it could be funded, and it wouldn't have to wait forever to get done. I'd like to go on to Ms. Spiegel. Ms. Spiegel, thank you for caring enough about our city to bring some issues to us tonight. One of the things that I would ask is, first off, I want to make the statement, I was at that Walgreens just Saturday, so I agree with you. I, I was sitting there myself thinking about it, but I was busy doing other things and, you know, anyway. But you, you do have a council member you can call and, and ask for, for him to bring that forward to code, and I know I've had people in my, my district do the same thing for me, and, and we're not tattletales, we just pass your information along, and generally your name is never used. So there is some need for some of our businesses to realize that they are, they are members of our community, and, and they would be, it would be nice for them to clean up a little bit. So I, I agree, I see, and then we have some businesses do an amazing job at it, so we, I just want to thank all those businesses who do, do that. And Mr. Emerson, I took time this weekend to, is he still here? Did he go? I actually took time to drive by the, the property, and it's not in my district, and actually drive down the dirt road and kind of see what it was, so I, I hope we get some resolve out of there, but that's something I'm hoping staff does. Council needs to let staff take care of that issue, and that's definitely not something I would want to be in. And Ms. Woody, regarding the immigration issue, I, I am the only member of this council that is an immigrant. I have papers, so I will gladly show my papers at any time, but at the same time, I think it's a solution looking for a problem. We, we, we as a city do not ask our police to go out and look for undocumented immigrants. And I do know that when they make stops and they do a check, if there's an issue, they're going to do something about it, and I would hope, and I appreciated your last statement that we don't want people doing illegal things to continue to hide in our community either. So there has to be this balance of, I, I agree with securing and, and having a safe place, but at the same time, if we have bad offenders doing things, hiding and, and being, you know, sanctuaries in people's homes or other places, I, I think that's an issue as well. So as an immigrant, I appreciate our, our present policy, and I look forward to hearing more about that. Mr. Cohen, thank you again, and I look forward to going to your party next week. So I received my invitation, and as citizen of the year, I'm looking forward to seeing your family, and how they put up with you this long, I do not know, but we are grateful that they did. And finally, to Ms. Dickerson, I, I, you know, a lot of times, people don't think we listen to what people say. Sometimes it's hard when it's said in such a hard tone, but one of the things that I've even talked with our city attorney about is, is that there are some things about 2D that weren't defined well, whether it was intentional or unintentional, that we really need to bear down on. And I would, I hope that not only this council look at that, but we look at it together with our citizens and say, here's what we really want as a community. I, I know that my neighbors wouldn't want me putting junk in my front yard, and Mr. Cohen, I don't think that's what you mean by that. If someone's working on their car, that's cool, but if, if it's been in the driveway for 10 years, and it's rusted, and it's rotten, and it's, you know, we have to find out at what point that is, and I'm not here to define that point tonight. I'm just saying maybe we need to address it and look at it a little further with our, our city attorney, who has absolutely nothing else to do, but, Jesus, but so we're, give us some time to look over this and, and make a positive outcome, and I'm excited to hopefully get some clarity on this and see where we could go, and that's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. To Ms. Spiegel, thank you for coming and, and caring so much about our community, like Councilmember Gillett mentioned. If you have other specific examples, I would be happy to talk with you about the best kind of path towards resolution, and also invite you to the Keeping Wood Beautiful meetings. I think that might be a good place for you to come, and...
We have an opening, don't we?
We do. So I was just going to say that, too. We're also accepting applications to our board and commissions, and it would be great if you would apply for maybe that one, and I don't know if there's any openings on code enforcement, but...
There may be.
That could be another option. There's still time.
Sorry, Ms. Spiegel, we can't pick you up in the audio. There's not an opportunity for back and forth with the audience right now. I apologize.
Call me or email me, and, and we'll, we'll work on some of those things. Also, to Ms. Woody, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts on that. I also think this is a really important topic, and I have mentioned this before, I think I would like us to put it on a study session possibly, and have all the appropriate parties at the table to discuss what would be the best for our city, and I don't know if that would be best to do after we get back from CML. I imagine that there might be some topics addressed there about this issue, so perhaps it would be maybe when we come back.
What is the exact topic of the proposed study session? I just missed it.
Not sanctuary city, but some kind of welcoming statements and making sure that all of our departments know what the policies are and how we're, just to make sure that we're all on the same page...
Thank you.
...with whatever policy we choose. So I would just like to put that on a future study session topic, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
I'd agree with Ms. Woody with Councilmember Martinez, but also Councilmember Gillett. Sometimes I think we're, we're a solution looking for a problem, but at CML, there may be some additional information on that, so I think she brings up a good point on taking a look at this. There are a lot of unfunded federal mandates I would like to not follow, so I don't want to necessarily just go down that path, that just because it's an unfunded federal mandate, then we might not be given food stamps out. So we need to make sure that we meet as a council and figure out how we want to handle this, but I do appreciate you bringing the issue. Lisa, I, I agree. I really would like to see some additional code, including for the businesses especially, where they're more responsible for some of the power washing and some of the weeds. Mr. Cohen, in front of you, our citizen of the year, who will be officially crowned later this month, wanted to bring a point to the city about that issue as well, and went around and hung little ornaments and garland from the weeds that were growing from city property, to make sure that we understood that we had an obligation in the properties that we're responsible for, that we meet those standards as well. So you're right, the residents, the businesses, and the city should all go ahead and make sure that we're in compliance with the code. It looked really pretty, I mean, to have little ornaments hanging from weeds. He's got a sense of humor, that one. So I do agree with you, and I would like to see some power washing and some other things included, especially businesses that have access to patios and that we're giving them access to public right-of-way, so that we keep that clean as we're, especially for our downtown area, as we're investing in that. You make a good point, and so we need to make sure we keep up with that. You know, the traffic, E-TAC or code enforcement, there's probably a lot of those boards that you probably, with all of your wide variety of interests. I did have an opportunity to walk seven or eight blocks of Broadway up and down the alley, both for Lincoln and Akoma, surprising in some areas that I thought it was a lot cleaner than I would have anticipated with the businesses, and some of them where I did see some concerns and problems where it might be an issue. So I appreciate you doing that. You get a much different view of things when you're walking around than when you just drive, so I appreciate your, your work on that. I, I don't know how we're addressing, I'm sure they, we will get some information on this access with Adriatic Place, or I guess you'll just keep coming until we give you an answer. I don't, I don't think that council can address that, so I'm just waiting until we get some additional information on what's going on with that. I don't think we're ignoring it, but I don't think this council can go ahead and take care of that piece of it. As to 2D, Mr. Cohen and Ms. Dickerson, I, I think that you're correct. There are a lot of problems with the way that that was handled in the code, including at one point where they struck out that you could, that you couldn't block a public sidewalk. Nothing in 2D allows anybody to block any sidewalks, so I'm sure that our new city attorney is going to go ahead and take a look at that, because there was some pretty sloppy work done on that, that I didn't even realize at the time that it was passed, that it affected, that 2D was never intended to affect. Nothing about public property, people being on the street, blocking a sidewalk, should have ever been affected, that those things were stricken out of there is, is ridiculous. So obviously, it needs a more careful eye on looking at all of it and how it affected it and what somebody interpreted at the time. There are some things that they took out that, that it should never have been taken out. So she has her work cut out for her, because there were just pages and pages that they thought it affected, and I'm sure she'll be looking at that. Let's give her a little bit of time. It hasn't even been a month yet. And Mr. Anderson, I, I do appreciate that you've reached out to me, that we have a meeting set up. I hope to get a little bit more information. We have a community, not only with churches, but this community is extremely generous, extremely compassionate, and tries very hard to reach out to its neighbor and get along with everybody. We have people in our community that are struggling to maintain their homes and their property, and so we don't want to pick one side over the other, either that people who are homeless and going through issues are not more important than people that are in the community or the businesses. They're not more important, and so we have to be more, we have to be respectful of everybody, and I'm glad that the businesses have reached out to partner, to have conversations, and I hope that it doesn't become an us/them thing, because it's certainly not where the residents are coming from or the businesses. Nobody is battling that. They just want to be respected and make sure that everybody can go ahead and conduct their lives and their business and their homes and be able to get along. So the community greatly appreciates what you're doing, just want to make sure we're all working together. And Mr. Parsons, I'm, I am concerned that you, on two, two different times when you were responding, made it very clear that you believe this is private and your rights and what's in that contract, and you have to understand that this community believes that a park got sold. It is an asset to this community, one way or the other. It is an asset to this community. That depot is an asset to this community. You have one of your own board members, the president of your board, saying that it's a community, afford a community. You have to make a decision which one you want to be. You have to make a decision which one you wanna be. To Ida May, you are correct. The reason that the historic society was not chosen was because of the presentation of when it could happen, what the assets were that could make it happen, um, the strength of the board and the ability for their historic knowledge and where they were gonna go, and there was plenty of opportunity to go ahead and take a look at that property, uh, know what was going on before anybody entered into any contract for that property to go for only $30,000, for this community to give that property up. And whether you argue whether it was community or a park, it was owned by the citizens of this city, and it was given for only $30,000 in consideration for the presentations that were being made at the time and the promises that were given, which were all on tape. So, um, to Councilmember Gillett's point, there were a lot of considerations that the council made at that time, once they made the decision to go ahead and sell it, which there is still a disagreement that it was a park and shouldn't have been sold, but besides that, once that got, uh, once they made the decision they were gonna go ahead and sell it, it was sold to you because of the presentation and the promise and the timeline that you gave. It wasn't four years later, and I understand that now you wanna say that there's surprises, but the community rightly can feel a little jilted by this entire situation going on, um, and, and you're gonna have to understand that, too. So, it was given to you based off of those promises and those guarantees at the time. You had ample time to know what you were getting into and the expertise at the time that you said you had to get into that, and so I think it's justified the concerns that have been brought up by several council members to go ahead and get this moving and find out what in the world is going on, or maybe we should do something else. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
Um, I would like to address that issue also. I agree with Councilmember Barrantyne that, um, the citizens do feel jilted, and it is really, the sale of that property is the reason that I'm sitting here tonight, because there was such a huge uproar in the community about selling a park, um, to a private individual for $30,000. So, there is some questions about the sale of that. And so, I also would like to thank Lisa for coming out to share. I greatly appreciate it when citizens take the time to come here and, and share things. I am very concerned about, um, the businesses along Broadway as well as, you know, homes, and, and I agree that we do need to have code enforcement look at it. I do believe that there are laws already on the books, and we just need to, um, to be enforcing those. Um, I've had other people call me and complain, um, about vermin, probably as a result of, um, what's going on and businesses not cleaning up after themselves, and so I, I really would like to see us, um, you know, clamp down on that. Joe, I thank you for coming and, and sharing with us, and, um, I look forward to, um, going forward with the communication and see, and, and I agree, it has to be looked at from everyone's perspective and really what's best, but I thank you for coming forward with that, and, um... Kathy, I appreciate also you bringing the issue forward, and I do believe that council needs to discuss this together, um, and so I agree that perhaps after CML, um, we probably should look at talking about this topic. Doug, thank you as always. I appreciate, um, your point of view, and, and I thank you and Cohen both for coming forward this, with this and having something specific to look at. And, um, I do agree that, um, I think our new city attorney has been very busy since she's been here, and, uh, so I'm very grateful for that, and I'm sure she'll get to it as soon as she can. Ida May, thank you for coming, and I appreciate your sharing, and, and it just, it prompted the thoughts especially about the depot, um, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
I, I was gonna talk, and then I wasn't. I thought, okay, I do have several council requests, but I did want to say to Ms. Spiegel, you saw a conversation and the tension tonight of what we're working with, right? Oh, yeah. So, I really encourage you to join a Board and Commission, because tonight is an example of, you have people who think, really, you can do anything and you shouldn't be bothered by old cars sitting for a while and people working on them up on, you know, whatever. I, that's also, there's some laws against that, but, um, but I agree that it's, it's a hard thing to figure out when you have businesses doing the same thing and then your own property gets tagged. So, I used to say that whenever my husband was out of town, everyone knew, because, uh, the, um, sidewalk did not get shoveled in the same way when I had little kids, and I would get tagged for that, but I got very good at shoveling the walk at six in the morning with three little kids, so I wouldn't have that happen again. But here are my council requests. Um, I really appreciate that Joe Anderson said that they were asking for some stats on the before and after crimes that, since they moved in. I'd love for all of us to get that once you, whoever figures that out. And then the second thing, I, I sort of intimated with, um, with the depot, uh, could there be a, some kind of a team to meet with them again, uh, to go over a, a variety of things that I think they've lost, perhaps because there have been changes in four years as well. Things have changed, even, uh, some of the state laws have probably changed, so i- if there could be a review team that helped in the next stage. And then, um, let's see, the other one is, uh, the power washing and routine nature of that. I know there's a rotation that goes through in the business district, but I wondered how far out that goes. Is it just the business district that does a, a power washing system? I think, I'm not sure who all does that, but if we could get some info on that, that would be helpful. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm dreaming that up.
We did do some power washing.
I think we did, and we've set aside funding for that, but it'd be helpful for the, for the public to know how, I think it's just once a year, but I, I don't know. And then the last thing, would, uh, this was another one with, uh, Mr. Parsons' promise of 300,000. What I remembered, and it, I haven't listened to the tape, is that there was, and that we all saw it as an encumbrance of up to 300 to 350, maybe 400,000 dollars to actually improve this, um, property, and that that was a daunting task for anyone, so that, then we were looking at who had the capacity to do that. But if there could be some, even if someone, perhaps, or, um, some of our, uh, folks who know where the links are, if you could find the link for that evening where there was a public testimony, I would, I would love it if somebody can do that. It's not a rush for me, but I don't know if others, I'd like to hear again. But, uh, um, obviously, we are where we are, and I hope that people who do care about the history of this city will, um, help to find ways to make this, uh, uh, an actual project that goes through and that we can be proud of, even if we disagree. I mean, we all come together at different points in our lives, and this might be one of those where differences, just like electing a president, that some of us like and some of us don't like, and we have to figure out, okay, how do we move forward with things that we don't like, that we make our place successful? And this is one project that I think a lot of us are gonna hold your feet to the fire further. I've had a conversation with you that already today, and it was nicer tonight than I think my conversation was with you. So, (laugh) thank you for coming.
Thank you. I did have a few comments as well. Uh, Mr. Parsons, thank you for coming and, uh, speaking with us this evening. Uh, you know, I couldn't agree, uh, more with Mr. Bergman in that, uh, there's been a long, winding history to this project, but I'm interested in making this, uh, project, partnering with you guys to make this as successful as possible, as quickly as possible. Um, you know, I think what you're hearing is the culmination of a lot of phone calls to a lot of us from residents wondering what's going on, particularly with the exterior of the building. And so, you, uh, like Mayor Protem, I, I would advocate to, um, expedite exterior improvement so that we can see some activity and that some folks can realize that this, this, um, you know, hasn't lost its legs and that this thing is still proceeding forward, 'cause most of the calls and questions I got were regarding, are they still moving forward at all? And, you know, and I, I did it, you know, share as much information as I could, but, uh, and that's why Mr. Bergman's email was extremely helpful, because that provided a whole level, different level of detail that I was able to provide some constituents. Um, so, uh, thank you for that, and, and as Councilmember Olson, I think, pointed out, uh, you know, please don't be offended. I think we are partners here, but, you know, we do need to kind of hold your feet to the fire, because some of us are being, our feet are being held to the fire by the, by the public for the public asset that this once was. Um, and so, again, I, I view us as partners, so let's, let's move forward and make this successful. Mrs. Spiegel, thank you, uh, for coming and speaking tonight. Um, you know, I agree, there's some issues along Broadway that, uh, that do need to be improved. Um, like, um, Councilmember Russell, there is a code that we just probably need to hold some folks a little more accountable to. Uh, enforcement is probably a little bit lacking in some of these areas. Uh, you know, generally, I, I like to think that the, the profit motive is enough for them to, you know, keep their places in good standing. You know, I don't like shopping at dirty places if I can, if I've got, uh, options, and, um, you know, with this type of economy and this type of city, there's plenty of options on where to spend your money. Um, and so, you know, you would think that that would motivate them, I, but like you said, I, I am also very concerned about the Broadway corridor appearance. Right now, that is our most visible commercial corridor of our city, and that helps people form, you know, opinions about the desirability of our place to live and do business. Um, so I recognize that that is a, a very important area to focus on. Um, I will note that this council is making a fairly substantial public improvement investment on the 3,400 block of Broadway. Obviously, that's just one block of, of a large stretch of Broadway, uh, but perhaps if we add some new life, uh, vitality, energy there, that there may, that may, uh, snowball a bit, uh, into the private sector is really what I'm hoping. And we are seeing a lot of transition along the Broadway corridor. So, a lot of the storefronts that you're seeing right now that are boarded up, that have, uh, don't have open businesses in them, are almost all leased up and with projects currently coming. Um, so, there is, uh, no lack of economic activity on the Broadway corridor, uh, and I hope that, uh, by the end of the summer, you hope to, that you might be able to see some, um, improvements, uh, from the public just driving down the block. Um, you know, I think to Councilmember Olson's point, you know, we probably need to look at our power washing budget. I know we did do some power washing, um, of Broadway this year, uh, but probably not enough. There is a immense amount of dirt and debris that is just moved by the traffic. Living and doing business along Broadway, I can't tell you how much. It is, it is a cha, constant challenge. You know, I can power wash my building, and the next day, it will really be coated in a, a thin layer of, of, of dirt just from the activity, um, happening around there. So, we should probably pick up our efforts in some street seeping as well, because that could help, uh, remove some of that debris. Sometimes there are instances where I see, you know, some pileup of debris in the gutter, um, and that, I think, uh, gets blown around and, and, uh, makes things a little less unattractive. I appreciate Mr. Anderson and his efforts, uh, you know, coming and speaking about the giving heart and your efforts regarding homelessness issues generally. Obviously, we're not immune to that here in the city of Inglewood. Um, you know, unfortunately, I don't have a silver bullet to solve the homeless issue in the city, and it's certainly, you know, hopefully, or I'm certainly, it's certainly not independently, unilaterally, gonna come from the city of Inglewood. We, we have no funding mechanism for that. Um, you know, honestly, I, I think what we need to do as a community is start looking at, you know, what are some partnerships we can build to help with this? In my mind, right now, where the rubber meets the road really on this issue is affordable housing. Um, you know, we're lucky in Inglewood to have a few affordable housing projects here for seniors, for, uh, folks who are dealing with disabilities. Uh, a couple of new projects now, um, uh, the Acoma Project, the, uh, project over at General Iron, those will be workforce housing that, uh, are helped kept down because they don't pay property tax and they don't pay use tax to the city of Inglewood, that helps keep the cost of the individual unit extremely low. Um, and when we looked at the AMI, or the Area and Median Income, of who would qualify to live in these places, 'cause there was concern about, well, you're gonna bring in all these outsiders who are gonna, you know, not be great for our community, but all, about half of our demographic, half of our city qualifies, um, to live in those units. Um, and so, we're not talking about, you know, a community of people coming in, we're talking about our own people who perhaps would have, uh, could use some of these subsidies from the state, from the federal government, to have more money in their pocket to spend in our local economy here in Inglewood. Mr. Emerson, thank you for coming and speaking about, um, speaking again about his property issue there. Uh, you know, I have, I have met with Mr. Emerson privately just a few times, just for the council's, you know, benefit or information, um, and was hoping that he and staff would be able to come up with a project and bring it forward to the council. It does seem like, um, we've, we've kind of met, uh, hit a bump in the road here, and it doesn't seem like we're making a lot of progress. Mr. Emerson, of course, is saying that, you know, uh, we're not doing our jobs and meeting our, our duties, uh, you know, staff's is kind of saying, I think, that, uh, they're having, uh, trouble identifying what the project he wants to, uh, get an answer on is. Um, I, I guess I'm just throwing it out there that I would like to maybe get involved and just try to help liaison a little bit between staff, um, and Mr. Emerson, just to try to move this thing forward. Um, it is, it is a complicated issue, but, uh, in my mind, you know, if we could get over the hump of, whose fault is it that Mr. Emerson's, um, property is landlocked? Uh, you know, Mr. Emerson continues to assert that we have some level of liability by subdividing his property and not, you know, providing access. And perhaps, you know, if we could get a memorandum, maybe this is a council request for the city attorney's office to give some clarity on that. Uh, I think if armed with that, we can move on to the next question of, what are we gonna do now? And, uh, I think I'm in uniquely, uh, position to be able to help him, just because I've spoken with him so many times, um, I feel like I can try to, uh, mediate that. If council's appro, okay with that, I just, uh, would like to throw that out there, that I would like to get involved and try to help Mr. Emerson out here a little bit, to try to get to a point of a yes or no with the city staff, so he can make a business decision on how to manage his property. Uh, Mrs. Woody, thank you for coming and speaking about the immigration issues. Um, I did want to, um, suggest that, um, you know, we are, you know, I, I do think I hear consensus around a study session after CML, so I'm gonna suggest that we're gonna take this issue up probably in July. Um, I did, I do think the statement of association, the statement from the Association of Police could be improved. I do think we could be better prepared for issues. I don't think we're necessarily first in line to deal with these issues, but that's not necessarily an excuse to be, uh, less than 100% prepared in my mind. And, you know, there, I think we could go a little ways, just to make some statements regarding, um, friendliness towards immigrants and welcoming to diversity and staying away from discriminatory practice. Uh, you know, I'm realizing now, there is some value in just making these broad statements that I hope that we can all agree upon. Um, you know, unfortunately, I have seen this a little bit of a partisan issue. I, I'm happy to hear that perhaps we're gonna take this up, um, in a study session. Uh, to Doug and Cohen who came and spoke about the inoperable vehicle issue, I do think that, you know, this inoperable vehicle issue, again, we need a council request for legal opinion on whether or not inoperable vehicles was contemplated, whether or not there is, uh, uh, in your opinion, a, um, conflict between 2D and 1591 and 1592, specifically on inoperable vehicles. I think there's a whole host of other issues, but in my mind, this inoperable vehicle issue is kind of, uh, a difficult one. Uh, it would be interesting, because, you know, inoperable vehicle in general, you know, unregistered vehicle, a vehicle that's parked in the street with a flat tire, you know, have traditionally been enforced even after the, uh, passing of 2D. That's all I have this evening. Councilmember Yates?
Just to add one more thing to, uh, Mr. Emerson's thing there. I think in order for us to understand the situation, we need to know the historical aspect of this. How did the city pave the streets? Who was responsible for paying for the, uh, improvements for sewer and drainage and that sort of stuff? And I believe that was actually the people who were, um, owning the lots. They accepted a new tax, but that's the sort of information we'll need in order to, to come to a reasonable, uh, decision on this. And then I would like to also ask council, can we take just a little break before we go on to business?
Yes. With that, I'll, uh, suggest a 10-minute recess before we move on to, uh, Agenda Item
We were, we were provided a financial statement. It's from your wife, it's from your wife's bank, the firm or information. Yeah, we, uh, I even went to, I even asked Bob, I went to, with Bob McCaslin on this, like, yeah, I'm like, we, yeah. You know, it was, we were given to it in executive session, because we, we'd never give financial information. Yeah, maybe it was just one of those things that we knew, I'm getting killed by people. What's going on with this? I just looked at June, June, they decided to give it to August. I just looked at June. June, they decided to give it to August. It was the final vote. It was done for us in August. Put up a sign, "Come in smooth," or something. Here's where I'm at with it. Listen, I didn't get my way, but it's what it is. I don't want you to do well. I wanted to be... Here's what I meant on your side, a great deal of freedom. And I've always said that. What a possibility. In 2011, in 2013, different time for real estate. Now? I believe that, well, I think we're just tired of getting razzed. And I really appreciate you coming up and taking the arrows from us. Yeah, have your guy come and talk to you every now and then.
I think that'd be great.
I'm glad to see you. I really, really, really am. Somebody needs to reach out to the Inglewood Resort Preservation. I respect you for coming. I truly do. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, he didn't want any more to do with us, I'm sure.
I don't. I understand.
All right, Todd. Take care. Did you ever see the movie The Money Pet?
Yeah.
I know it is. What a tower of money. All right, take care. It never stops.
Did you get your copy of the Inglewood magazine yet in the mail?
I did.
I did not get mine yet. When did you get it? Do you remember?
Uh, last week's the time.
The heck?
You know what? It's weird. I'm very tactile. I just think it feels weird. It feels like 800 grits.
I like the way it feels.
It's odd.
I like it. It's different.
My wife loves it.
I like it too. I do too.
I don't want to touch it.
As soon as I picked it up, I was like, I love this.
I was like, I don't want to touch it.
I touched it. Well, I got a copy from the city manager's office. I sat there and read through every single page. This is cool. Yeah, I'm so excited. What? I did.
I didn't want to do a city council, like, oh, this is why we're, you know, voting.
Yeah, especially the first one. Yeah, I think that's good. I liked yours. I think it's great. I'm like so excited about it. I just can't wait to get mine in the mail.
I told my wife, we have to keep this. It's the first edition.
Yeah, ever. Hey Linda, did you get your copy in the mail of the magazine?
I didn't get mine yet.
Where's the guy's?
I think they sent it out.
I'm sure they do.
Did you really? I haven't got mine yet either. I'm just curious.
Hey Doug, did you get your copy of the Inglewood magazine yet?
I did.
Did you see your big feature in it? So cool.
Calling all mayors.
It's pretty cool, huh? We're getting closer to a quorum. You're famous. You're just now getting the credit that you've been deserving.
You deserve it.
Absolutely. Oh gosh, somebody go get him.
Exactly. I didn't pull out my butt. You know, I was joking. You know, I was just funny with you and it didn't go over well. I was just being facetious. Well, we could do two, three. We could do the four. No, it's just, there are a few things that need to be, I just think for, to avoid future issues like this, we're just going to define it and clean it up a little. And that might need to happen with a vote. I'm all for asking the people, you want an operative?
Let's get this party started again.
Folks, if I could get folks to begin to take their seats, we're going to get started in about one minute.
Who's been on my machine? That wasn't there when I left. I probably hit it with my elbow.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to Agenda Item 8. This is Communications Proclamations and Appointments. There's nothing this evening, so I'll move us on to Consent Agenda Items. Agenda Item 9, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
May I move, we approve Consent Agenda Item 9 B1 and 2?
Second.
Thank you. I'm giving it to Councilmember Olson, I think, that got in there.
She's in a hurry.
Councilmember Olson has it. And are there comments? Councilmember Russell?
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item B1.
That leaves us with B2. Any comments on B2? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. I'll bring us back to 9B1. This is Amendment to 733A2C, the distancing requirement, and the addition of 73A2D, exempting those with currently established residence from the application of 733. This is Council Bill 4. Staff recommends an amendment to the current ordinance clarifying the exemption provision for those persons with current established residences. Do we have a staff source on this? I assume this is a city attorney? I would like to just move it forward, perhaps to questions from council on Council Bill 4. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I had several coffees in town hall. Several of the people that were here earlier, I hope they watched the tape later, were concerned on both sides of this issue. The ones who truly believe that distancing protects the public, believe that we unprotected half of the public. And the people who believe that distancing is ridiculous and a burden and doesn't protect anybody, we're still leaving something in place that burdens our citizens and our community. So for warm oatmeal, this Prozac drip kind of thing to explain at least, which I did at the coffees, why I voted on it originally was because I knew that it would end the lawsuit if we compromised and it was somewhat of a feeling like, you know, the lesser of two evils. And after talking to the people in my district and my area, I'll not be voting for it. It's not, it doesn't work for either side. It doesn't work for the people who think distancing works and it doesn't work for the people who think it's ridiculous to have distancing. So I'll not be voting for it.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Olson?
So I, this really confuses me, Councilmember Barrantyne, because, and I think we had four of us who would have voted that night to have no distancing at all. And yet you did push through doing the 1,000, you thought a good compromise. I just don't get it because I think we have four that were willing to go down that. I mean, the mayor said if we don't have a consensus, yes, that's what I'll do. I'll vote against it. So here we are now, second round, third round. Is it just from having talked to citizens again and so you changed your mind or?
Can I answer?
I just finished. Yes, I think if...
I was asking the mayor to see if I had the floor.
Yes, please. We're going to concede the floor to Councilmember Barrantyne.
That's not what happened that night. We tried to go ahead and get that poll. There was another vote. There wasn't, you'd have to go back and listen to the tape, but that's not what happened. We didn't, we didn't have four people that would have gone ahead and done that. If you think that there is consideration at this point to go ahead and get rid of distancing altogether, then I would be more than happy to make that motion at this time. I don't believe that's the case, but I'll make the motion to go ahead and get rid of the distancing altogether, since you believe that's the case. If I misunderstood it or misread it, my sincere apologies. Second.
Let's go back to Councilmember Olson. Did you have anything else on comment there? I am hearing a motion and a second. I will get to that in just a second. I'm sorry, can we get some clarity on what the motion is that's on the table?
To eliminate the distancing. Not to have any residency restrictions at all.
Okay. City Attorney, do you feel comfortable with that amendment here?
If that amendment is, if that amendment is made, then what staff does is takes that amendment and goes back and corrects, it'd basically be 7-3-3 to conform to the amendment. And then we would bring that ordinance back. Well, that would be published and then we would bring that ordinance back for a second reading, which is what this one is here for tonight. It was a previous amendment, so if, again...
Sounds to me like if the consensus of council is to head down that path, that you'd probably feel more comfortable tabling this issue and coming back with something for publication and for reconsideration by the council.
I'm always more comfortable having a little bit more time to work on something, but...
Thank you.
However you want to handle it.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, I'm going to let you finish up then, since you were here.
So I guess my question would be, given that information, it might be wiser to say, should we have a vote to see if there are others who want to go back to that as an issue and let our attorney work on that so that it could be brought back? So not the voting on that we do it tonight, but that we would do it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I needed to do that in order to answer a question and get the floor.
Oh, fair enough. I guess I'm just coming back to you on the motion.
There's a motion and a second, and I appreciated Councilmember Olson's clarification on what happened that night.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
So I do have a question too. I mean, I'm, there were some people that came to my town hall meeting and talked about it. Councilmember Barrantyne is absolutely correct that those who didn't want it changed. They're not happy and those who did want it are not happy either. So the bottom line is I would have voted for repeal. I did vote, I did vote for the compromise only because that night, that was the only option to protect those people that already lived in the city. So I guess my question, because I really would have voted for repeal. I would have voted for repeal. There were four of us that would have voted for repeal.
The three of us would have that night and we had a fourth possibly, but we did not go that way.
I didn't know either, so...
You know, just for clarity on that issue, that is kind of news to me, but, you know, and, you know, hearing, I think, what the city attorney's saying, I think that makes sense. I have some concern about, you know, an amendment of that nature at this hour without any public notice. I would prefer to go back, repost this, bring this forward again, with the question being now, should we remove distancing altogether rather than 1,000 versus 2,000 feet? Would be my thought as far as the process, but I'll allow others to comment. I'll allow others to comment. Councilmember Martinez?
I would prefer not to go back and revisit this topic. We spent the better part of a year hearing public comment and getting all kinds of feedback and we all voted that night to go this route. And we had the opportunity that night also to go a different route and we came to consensus. And so I would like to see us move forward with what's in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protongila?
I would agree the same also. One of the reasons that was unanimous that night is because we also agreed not to move those that were here out. And that it was a compromise. It was a 7-0 compromise. And I didn't like it all the way and neither did, I'm sure, I would, so we move forward tonight. This is just a cleanup bill because it wasn't put in our ordinance the right way. And all she, all this is doing tonight is making sure that it's written properly in our ordinance. We're not re-litigating this or re, this is just, there needs to be a cleanup. Here's the cleanup and we're moving forward. I have no, no desire to go another year on this.
Councilmember Yates?
I believe we should go ahead and move forward. I'm not interested in revisiting this issue. Like other folks have said, we've spent a good part of a year, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I just want to make some clarification. This is not just a cleanup. A second vote, it's being brought back as the ordinance for the second vote. The second vote is just as important as the first vote. It isn't a given that it's going to go through. That's why there are two votes. This is not just some cleanup issue or wrote motion that we're going through. This is an important representation for our citizens. And I explained to the citizens why I felt, why I voted the way I did, why I compromised. And I heard them loud and clear that I shouldn't have done it. So I have the opportunity to vote twice on something. It's, there is a requirement, a reason, not just for formality. And in order to adequately represent the people, I have made my comments on why I'm not going to vote for it on the second reading.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I find this whole thing to be really unfortunate that we get to these points on these where we've all agreed 100% and then it's brought back up. So I'm, that's why I wanted to bring it out again. I was not going to speak about it unless it got brought up. I will vote yes on it because I think in good faith, we all did vote for it to go through and asked our staff to put this together. But I find it incredibly irresponsible for us to do this over and over again and then change our minds like this in the middle without a full hearing of all of us to what you heard, what others have heard, to the contrary of why we should vote like this. So I will vote yes. I just wanted to make a point of...
Are you going to yes on the amendment or yes?
I'm going to vote yes when we come, yeah, I'm supporting. But it's, yeah, I mean, we still have to vote on her amendment, right?
If she holds yes.
Yeah, so I'll vote, yeah, not the way it stands.
At this point, we now have a proposed amendment. You know, I think that we're... At this point, we, we now have a proposed amendment, you know, I think that we're hearing it's probably going to fail. Do you want to proceed with it here, or are you open to some other possibilities? Do we want to proceed with the motion here? Further comments on the motion? Would you like to speak as the holder of the motion here? Please.
Normally I wouldn't, but given what Councilmember Olson said, that there was this confusion that if this had been brought up at that night, that a repeal of this would have actually happened because we had four votes. Apparently that was not made very aware, so I'm going to have to go ahead and request that the motion be voted on so that it's, it's clear.
Thank you. You know, just like, I guess my issue, I'm going to vote against the amendment. You know, I generally do not support distancing requirements, and so, you know, I think I'm just trying to honor a public process where the public can follow along as to what we're doing. I would feel much more comfortable looking at a process that brought this issue back and with a new amendment starting at first reading that we could have a discussion about and some public process on. Councilmember Olson?
Mayor, that is exactly what you said at the point when we finally agreed, and that's where we had this consensus.
Fair enough. I didn't want to go here, but let's go here. I mean, if you want to go here. I thought your situation was not clear, candidly. I did not understand that you supported no distancing requirements that evening. I thought we had three to four, and I thought that was fairly clear. We discussed it at my district meetings later. I understand you guys discussed it at your meetings. I'm, the way I perceive it, you're changing your position. Maybe I misunderstood and maybe that's my fault, but my understanding right now, and that's why I didn't necessarily want to go here, but my understanding is there was, your position was unclear to me, I guess, perhaps, in hindsight now, if you're saying now that you would have repealed distancing requirements that night.
Oh, I did, and I said that clearly then.
I'm not 100% sure about that.
I think I did because people were surprised because then it was unclear as to who, who actually voted what in that, and I asked the question, I said, wait a minute, what did I just vote for? But regardless of that--
So, there was an amendment put on the table, correct? Like, what was the amendment put on the table that you voted against? Do you recall that night?
So, I think that's where my questions were because I said I am for repealing it all.
And that's what confused your position, I think.
And then I voted unanimously for the, for the actual compromise.
You voted against compromise, or you voted against grandfather-- You voted against, I'm sorry, she's asking me a question. You voted against grandfathering in all of the people. Yes, you did. You voted against the amendment that would have grandfathered all of the residents in--
Because I didn't believe in the distancing, yes, because I said I don't believe in the distancing, and that's what it was. I said I don't think we should have--
And so, again, I think right now, we still have a four-person unanimous, four-person majority. Would you like to see this come forward on a first reading again?
A four-person majority?
That's, that's what I'm seeing now because of what you're telling me tonight.
Okay.
So, if I could get you guys perhaps to remove your motion, then we could give that direction to the staff and we can table this amendment for tonight.
In order to make sure that council, because obviously there's some concern about council truly being heard, and that if it had been truly heard that night, we'd have no, we would have repealed it, I would like the amendment that I've done to at least be voted on so that there's something on record, making sure that we understand that if we move forward with this, we're going, we're moving forward to repeal this ordinance.
And, you know, that is your decision as the holder of this motion, and again, though, you know, I will be supporting this. This puts me in a weird position because I will be supporting--
The unfortunate part is, is that you've had it voiced, that certain council people don't think that they were heard, that they believe that there was enough to go ahead and repeal that night, and it wasn't done, and because of the way it was handled, so I'm very concerned how--
And again, I think the best way to do this is to table the second reading and move forward with a new first reading, if that's what the majority of council wants to do. And that's what I'm hearing, correct?
What is, what is the motion on the floor?
Right now, Councilmember Berentine has a motion to amend Council Bill Four, correct? Council Bill Four to zero distancing. We've heard from the city attorney's office that there'd probably be a better process to bring this back to a first reading, but it could be done right here and right now, and Councilmember Berentine would like a record. My problem is that, you know, if I'm not assured that this process is going to come forward, I'm going to support Council Bill Four.
Okay. Let me make a suggestion then, that the motion needs to be changed because the truth is, you don't really want the distancing to go back to what it really was.
No, that's not what, that's not what the motion is.
Okay.
It would be to repeal it, to have no distancing. Councilmember Olson, that's not what I would have done, but Councilmember Olson made it clear that her voice was not heard that night and that we would have had a majority to repeal this, and I'm concerned that if we don't take some action that solidifies that there's a majority of this council that's for repeal, that we're just going to go back into a bullying situation where we all think that people aren't getting heard, or we think that's the only option, is compromise, and if that's not what the majority wanted, it shouldn't happen.
So, in effect, the motion would remove it to no distancing, which would be similar to repeal, correct?
Correct. I just don't feel great about that as a public process, and I will not support the amendment tonight. Council, geez.
Can we ask the city attorney about?
You may. May benefit our discussion. What did you want to ask her?
About, I mean, the mayor does not feel comfortable with that process. Is, is there a way that we need to move forward with this?
You have a couple of different processes. The first option is you can approve the ordinance before you tonight. That was the compromise that you all approved back, I think, in March, and then direct the staff to bring back a new ordinance that would, in effect, repeal the ordinance you approved tonight. That's option one. It's kind of long and drawn out. The second one is you can vote against the ordinance before you tonight, and that would, and direct council to bring back a, or direct staff to bring back a amended ordinance or a new ordinance that would get rid of distancing requirements. That does leave in effect the law that's currently in place, which is the 2,000-foot distancing requirement, so.
So, by voting on this motion first, that would go back to the law that's currently in effect?
The 2,000-foot is being held in abeyance because of a, of a active court case, and whenever or however that lawsuit is resolved, whatever laws in the books would begin to be active again. So, I can't, honestly, I'd be guessing on timelines of all of this.
Would you clear up the first one, which is if we vote for zero distancing, to amend this to zero distancing, then it would be zero distance, and you could go ahead and still go ahead and bring back a repeal ordinance?
Yes, and that would be similar to what's before you tonight. The last time this came before you in March, as a body, you adopted an amendment, so staff took that amendment back and, and put that into the formal language, published it, and now that's what's back before you tonight. You can, again, amend the ordinances before you tonight, and it, and the motion would be to get rid of all distancing requirements. And if you've done that amendment, we'll do the same thing. We take this back, we rewrite the ordinance to conform to that motion, and we bring, and we publish that, and then we bring it back to you for a second reading.
There would be no problem with enforcement because it would be at zero, and it wouldn't go back to the old 2,000.
Right. Once it goes into effect, which would be about 60 days.
If we did the zero tonight, and that would give you the time to go ahead and bring the other back without causing any problem for enforcement.
The enforcement question is--
For the 60 days.
Yeah, the enforcement question is much more complicated, but yes, if, my part of it, which is rewriting the ordinance, if you pass this amendment tonight, what you've done is you've directed staff to go back and, and correct this ordinance and bring it back to you in compliance with your amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, did you have anything else there?
I, that's okay. I would just like to make one other comment. This is the reason that it goes through two readings, is to discover, I mean, it makes me really sad that we didn't have this discussion that night, but it's not moving on with, in a direction with the information that we have.
Thank you. Mayor Protongi.
I just want to be clear. We, this ordinance, not a repeal ordinance, can you do a repeal ordinance on a distancing ordinance? It's two different, completely different things. Can we do an amendment, a repeal amendment on a distancing ordinance? Aren't there some guidelines on what amendments can be?
Not really. Basically, what was brought before you, at some point predating me, was, was a request to amend seven dash three dash three, and seven dash three dash three has to do with the distancing requirements. In, and again, I'm not sure of all the timelines because it predates me, but this was brought back to council for a second reading in early March, and at that time, council, council did amend the distancing requirement to add in the exemption for people who had already established residency within the area discovered. If you were to amend, if you were to make the motion to amend this evening to get rid of all distancing, basically what we would bring back to you, what I would hear is that you want to eliminate seven dash three dash three, and that's, would require bringing, bringing it back to you one more time with, with the elimination of seven dash three dash three. So, instead of just amending it, you're just getting rid of it, but you're still acting on the exact same section of code you've been acting on for the last several months.
You're saying that, that it would come back for a second reading then? So, an amendment tonight would effectively be that first reading? Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say that I feel like we did discuss this quite a bit. We discussed all the options, totally getting rid of it, keeping it the same, a whole bunch of options in between, and we had months and months and months to discuss it, and I feel like we discussed it to death. I mean, and so I really don't want to go back and have those same discussions again. If the majority of council wants to, great, we can kind of start that process over again, but I really want to move forward with what's in front of us tonight.
Councilmember Yates?
The way I see it right now is that we have an amendment on the table. We vote yes or no at that point in time, then we vote yes or no on the, on the, on the ordinance that we have here. I'm sorry, what?
Council Bill Four.
Council Bill Four. And then, at that point in time, we as a council, if we choose as a group to repeal it, then we repeal it. Right now, we're, we're just throwing a whole lot of, I won't say the word, a lot of stuff into a basket, mixing it up, and it's going to turn out to be a giant, giant mess. We either unravel it, or we go forward. One of the two.
Thank you. You know, and I think that helps sort of clarify, you know, just thinking, having an opportunity to think about this a little bit, gives me an opportunity to kind of clarify my position on this, and I think that is that I'm going to support Council Bill Four and also support, you know, an additional process to bring forward no distancing requirement, if that's in fact what we want to do. I just feel like if we don't move forward with this or bring forward another process and try to make a decision on the fly that the public can't follow, I think we would look foolish. Councilmember Olson?
I appreciate that, and I'll agree with you on that. I think what I'm concerned about is we have had this process, we have agreed, and we had 100% of us agreeing, and then tonight we have two people saying they don't agree with it, and I agreed with them originally on it, and if you go back to the tapes, I was the first person to speak that night. I asked you if I could speak first when it came to our time, purposefully, so I would signal to you all that I was going to vote with no distancing. I don't believe in it, but when, when everyone looked that was not what they were going to do, I was willing to compromise too, and compromise is how you get things done. And then when we come back to it again and we're not willing to vote for it, then I get really concerned that we continue to do this over and over to ourselves, and I, I agree with not distancing, so I, I'm going to go with my values on this, but I, I think you're right. Inevitably, if we do this again, we have to have another public hearing in my mind. People need to know that we're looking at zero now. I think you said originally you wished we had done that because that's where you think we'd get more people out. I kind of doubt it, but if we did, great. But I don't like the, I'm more upset about the process that we've just had here, but when it hits on something like this where I think, yeah, I agree and I think we had it, I'm not sure all the little, what's all going on here. I don't want to believe the worst.
Councilmember Berentine?
I'm, I'm sorry. I really regret that Councilmember Olson doesn't believe that she was heard. I'm surprised because I don't think anybody doubted what I wanted. There was repeal on the table the entire time that was brought up that night. I don't, one of the only other options. The process that I'm most concerned about is, I gave my reasons why I didn't want to vote for this on second reading, and what muddied this up is that Councilmember Olson has made it very clear that she was not heard, that she knew that there was a majority that night and that majority didn't get heard, and that concerns me a great deal. I would like to call the question, please.
Thank you.
If the mayor wishes to make another motion afterwards, to go ahead and have this council look at it for a repeal, that's up to you, but we seem to have a lot of confusion on whether people get hurt or not, and I'm very sad that we apparently had a majority for repeal that night, and now people are voting to support something that they didn't believe in, in order to, or even advocating for that is what confuses this whole process. I've made my position clear all the way along, I just want to call the question.
Thank you. We are voting on the amendment to bring the distancing requirement down to zero again. Please vote on that.
All votes have been cast. Let the records show two ayes and five nays, the two ayes being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Thank you. Now, we're coming back to the underlying Council Bill Four, as recommended.
Get it clear.
Thank you. Discussion here, you know, to table, you know, my preference again is to, is to support this and, and bring forward a totally separate process, apparently. Any thoughts? Anybody want to discuss or table?
Vote.
Councilmember Yates?
Let's, let's vote on this.
Thank you.
If we're going to repeal it, then we do it as a separate thing.
Thank you. Council Bill Four as written, please vote. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, this is public hearing items. Nothing this evening. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 11. This is ordinance resolutions and motions. Under 11C, we have, we have C1. This is the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant centrifuge variable frequency drive replacement. The award of the design-build project. The plant supervisory committee recommended at its meeting on December 15th, 2016, that the council approve by motion the design-build project contract for the replacement of three centrifuge variable frequency drives and associated control panels located at the Inglewood wastewater, Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $854,910. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the centrifuge variable frequency drive, which I'm going to call VFDs for obvious reasons. This project was presented on February 13 as part of a study session. It was presented by Mr. Stowe, and so I don't have a PowerPoint or anything with me tonight because you've already seen that. The centrifuges are the final step in the biosolids dewatering process. They mix polymer in with the sludge, thicken it, and then spin it like the spin cycle on your washing machine to get to remove excess water. Once this has been accomplished, the biosolids are loaded into trucks and hauled out to our Littleton-Inglewood farm and land applied beneficially as fertilizer for dry land wheat and for corn. In 1996, Centrisys, the manufacturer of these VFDs, upgraded the VFDs. Since that time, they have fallen out of warranty and are no longer supported. In fact, EPA has banned the manufacturing of the parts and components for these units because they have asbestos. So, we can't, we can't buy them used and we can't-- So we can't buy them used, and we can't have them manufactured. So this is our, the reason for our project is that we need to replace this. They're at the end of their serviceable life, far beyond the end of their serviceable life. And so primarily, the reason I'm here is to entertain any questions and seek council approval.
Questions from council. Councilmember Russell.
I do have a question. And the question is, do you have a line item budget? That shows, the budget page that we were given shows the $1.347 million. But how many things come forward? Do you have a line item that shows that all of the numbers in that line item add up to $1.347, $1,347,000?
The projects are called out individually, but they are all in that line item number that's the $1.3 million. That's the culmination of the projects.
Okay. So, I mean, my question is, I keep hearing that there is a line item budget. And you, I'd like to know where the breakdown is because I still have not found it. And, I mean, I'm okay with this, but I want to make sure that we have the money in the budget to pay for it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrington.
Bringing out the big guns now. Put those guys back there. The, I did try to go on. I know that the request that we made at the joint sewer meeting with Littleton to have that line item budget and that that was put on the website, but I've had difficulty funding that as well. I don't know whether it would be easier to go through that process with you and your department or whether we could go through it with Kathy. But if you would like to meet, I would just, I have the same question. Is that if we have that same number being brought forward, you know, it's like...
I'd like to call a point of order.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
Right now, we're talking about, are we going to spend money on a separator? Not about a line item budget?
I, you know, I think that what Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Barrington are both asking for is for a calculation of what is exactly being spent in 11C1, correct? Or no? Do you feel like that's inaccurate?
I feel it's, not feel. What I'm seeing here is, yes, they want a line item budget. I understand that. That's something that we need to be bringing up at the end of our session or having a study session or making council requests or whatever. Right now, we're talking about actually, are we going to approve the solid separator that we need for our water treatment plant?
Thank you. You know, again, my understanding is, you know, that they're asking this question because that's going to help them make the decision. I do appreciate, you know, at this hour, let's try to keep these questions relatively pointed, please. You know, I will be looking or trying to keep us on task throughout the remainder of the meeting. So please just try to keep them pointed as possible. Yeah, I just did. We're good. Keep going. Yeah, I guess I'm telling you that I find that these questions are on point, and we're going to move forward.
All right. Under the financial implications, where it says that it was total budgeted amount, and Councilmember Yates is correct. We are talking about spending money. In that spending money, you have pointed out a specific line item budget of where it's being spent. And in that was a total amount that's higher than this amount that obviously includes other things. And we need to know how to find that and where to...
You are in your question period here, though. Please answer, ask staff questions at this period, please.
I'm trying to, I don't know why they're confused.
We've moved on from the point of order.
It's in the financial stuff. I want to know where it is. Can you show it to me specifically? Because I can't find it.
The page that was in your packets is the line item that that project is contained.
Right. So I can't find that on there. So I'm willing to go ahead and support this. And it may be that they're testy because it's late. But I would like to at least meet with you. I could support this if you would, if I could get somebody to meet with to show me where this financial, to explain the information that you provided in here, if you could do that. If somebody's willing to do that, or you can tell me, I can support this. Can you?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
Was this something that was budgeted from last year? Or for this year's budget, excuse me?
Yes, it was budgeted specifically for this year. We had also budgeted for it last year, but getting everything pulled together for the project took a little longer. So we budgeted again for it for 2017.
So when you guys budget that, you're not the only one that's involved to make sure that we have the money for it? It goes through our accounting department and everything else? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any supporting comments from Kathleen?
It's actually a line item in the Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant. It may not be identified as to each and every little piece that goes in there, but it is a full line item.
So we do have the funds to do this? And it was budgeted for?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions. I entertain a motion on 11C1. Second. Thank you. Further discussion? Were you saying you were able to appoint something out to her right now? Is that what you were saying?
No.
Thank you. Just for clarity.
It's a GL code that she was talking about. I looked for that.
Thank you. Just for clarity. So we are ready to vote on 11C1.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to 11C2. This is resolution for a year-end supplemental appropriation to the 2016 budget. Staff recommends council approve the attached resolution for a year-end supplemental appropriation to the 2016 budget. Sorry about that. Please continue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight before you, we're asking for your approval of a resolution. That's part of a normal year-end process where we're reviewing and approving the expenses so that they align with the budget. This is done because the budget is actually put together in the July to August, September type timeframe the year before. And not everything is known at that time. We do our best with our crystal ball, but some of them are a little cloudy. Things change during the year. So with that, we've got four main, or four, I'll get this in the right spot. Four key changes that we'd had during the year. The first one has to do with the general fund. We developed two budget analyst positions by pulling positions and funding over from Parks and Rec and Finance so that the funding was there. And Parks and Rec and Finance did, underrun for those positions so that those budget development projects or budget development positions were created. And then also, we brought an administrative position over from Parks and Rec into, I'm going to call it Finance, but it was a Finance-HR combination at the time. And that was because that position was actually doing HR and payroll work. So that position came over. The funds were not transferred at that time. So Parks and Rec underran, and we overran a little bit. Now, as you can see from the numbers, a position is way more than $21,000. And for that administrative position, we were able to cover most of it within the additional underrun we had within the budget and are only asking for $21,000. The same with the budget analysts. The two positions together were about $175,000. Again, the overrun is over, only over $129,000. It looks like it comes out of the unassigned fund balance, but that's because the underrun from Parks and Rec and Finance went into that unassigned fund balance. For the total year, the general fund was under, and we were able to increase the fund balance by 2.1 million total. Then it's all netted in there. So that's item one.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Okay.
Councilmember Russell.
So the funds were there in the Parks and Rec?
Yes, ma'am.
And, but the funds were not transferred at the time you moved the positions back?
That's true.
So we're not just, it doesn't have to really do with moving the funds because you're short also? Are you short?
We're in total, no. We're not short at all. The underrun did occur in Parks and Rec. It's just not noted here because we don't need to add additional funds to their categories to make up their budget. The only thing that we're approving at this point is the money to cover the overruns in the departments because the council needs to approve the total budget for the different departments. Since they underran, they're within their allowable.
So then, I guess my question is, why are all these funds here? The Malle Center Trust Fund, the Public Improvement Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Risk Management Fund? And all of them have balancing numbers, so...
Because I haven't gotten to the rest of them yet. I just took section one, so I'll get to the other ones if you'll give me a chance.
Yes, please continue then.
Okay. It's a long evening, sorry.
Finish the presentation, then we'll get to questions.
That's fine. The Malle Center, there were some unexpected additional costs installing new televisions. The actual tech requirements and the mountings costed more than was expected. And so they're asking for available funds from the balance to cover that for $1,000. Public Improvement Fund and the Capital Fund are a joint activity. There were four projects that were approved in the Capital Fund, and a transfer was anticipated to be made from the Public Improvement Fund over to the Capital Fund to cover them. It was approved in the budget for the projects, but the actual transfer did not get approved. So those four projects include the document management system for $55,000, the disaster recovery system for $150,000, the compact crawler boom lift for $155,000, and the telephone system and communications for $90,000. The risk management, what we did was we had higher-than-anticipated claims. And so we're asking for some fund balance to cover that as well. And that covers the four basic items. Any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Barrington.
I appreciate Councilmembers, Russell's questions on this because the way that this resolution is written is that there were additional expenditures that were not budgeted for. And in number two, you're asking so that the budget matches what we spent for the budget to be changed. So, I mean, the way that each one of these line items is written and the resolution piece kind of doesn't match. When was the overrun for, where was the overrun for the Rec Center?
The Rec?
What counting period?
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact counting period on that.
Was it 2015?
Yeah, no, no, no.
Not 2016?
This is all 16.
Okay, that's not what I'm kind of reading here. It was 2015 that you had in here.
That's what the fund balance was at the end of 2015. Right.
Okay, so the two things that you're asking to do are to, it still seems with the supplemental appropriation, why isn't this not just being done as a transfer? Why supplemental appropriation?
Because the underruns go into the unassigned fund balance. And so we pull it back out of the unassigned fund balance to cover the overages in these departments. I can't say why it's done that way other than historically, that's been represented that way.
And that's what I'm asking for, is when did it go into there? Because the budget analyst positions were last year.
16, correct. So the decision was made at the beginning of 16. It was right before I got here. So it had to be the January, February type timeframe that we were going to develop these positions and hire them. And the funds were identified and pulled in. So it was after the budget was put together, which was, again, the previous July to September type timeframe. It wasn't known at the time the budget was put together that that's the direction that we would go because it made most sense to provide the most visibility to that type of work that we wanted done. So it was a structure thing, an admin thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
So when you add all of these numbers together, is it going to change the unassigned fund balance, the 2.1 million? Is money coming out of there?
It's all part of that 2.1 million. There's the pluses and minuses within the 2.1 million. Net-net, everything done, all this put aside and taken care of, we increased our fund balance by 2.1 million.
So what was it before? Before we took care of all of this?
2.1 million. This happened within the 2.1 million.
Just for clarity, perhaps, I think you're saying from 15 to 17, the balance is up 2.1 million. She's saying from the time of, you know, finishing up 16 to this new appropriation, the fund balance is going to come down how much?
That's correct. That's what I'm asking.
No, it's not. It's 2.1 million.
Because you just got finished saying...
It was activity within that 2.1 million. So we're just trying to explain...
Right. So now I think her question is outside of that 2.1 million, then. It's about the undesignated reserves and the impact on that.
Correct.
Do you know the answer to that? As far as what the impact to the undesignated reserves is on this issue?
To the undesignated reserves.
Meaning, how much does all of this add up to? I mean, how much money are we appropriating? That's what I'm asking.
For the general fund, okay, we put more than, we put 2.1 million plus this 150 in. I'm taking the 150 back out. So the net-net is 2.1 million increase. Am I answering the right question? For going around and around here, I apologize.
Perhaps, you know, Councilmember Russell, this is your question time. I don't want to interrupt and redirect your own questions, but I can help you out.
So the other departments underran. Okay, and if we had just put the underrun in and not had these little bits of overruns, it would have been more than 2.1 million. So in taking those little pieces out to cover, we are at 2.1 million.
Okay, but I guess...
Can you help add some clarity here? Is it possible for you to get in on this conversation here? I feel like we're going back and forth here. Do you understand what the issue that council's trying to get towards is?
Yeah, I see what the question is being asked. And the reason that it's even more confusing is that you set the appropriation for 2016's budget in 2015. So I'm hearing 2015 discussed a lot too, and that's the reason for that. So if I understand Councilmember Russell's question correctly, she's trying to ascertain specifically, yeah, we're adding 2.1 million dollars into the fund balance. But with the additional appropriations that are being made to make 2016 whole, what was the number of the fund balance before that additional 2.1 million was added?
It would have been the 2.1 million plus this 150. Would have been what was added to the unfunded balance, and then we take the 150 out to cover...
2.250, and she's taking 150 to appropriate the difference.
150,000.
150,000 is the answer.
Exactly.
Councilmember Barrington.
What he just said was that in 2015, we set the appropriation for the budget for 2016. We appropriated the amount of money that covered that budget. And now we are appropriating more money. That's what it reads to me. What he just said, and now we're appropriating the money to cover the difference. The verbiage that's listed here, that's what that reads to me. So that's where I'm kind of missing this.
Spending more money here. I think that's fair, and you know...
Okay, thank you.
Let's not be, let's not twist things here. We went over budget in 2016. This is a supplemental appropriation to make these things match for 2016.
Right. And because it's done by department, that's why we separate the pieces.
Councilmember Russell.
You know, I apologize. Part of the reason I'm asking these questions, and when you cut people off when they're asking questions asking questions or making statements, is it looks to me like this is a shell game. And there's 10 shells laying here, and we're moving them around, and so we need clarity. We're talking about...
I apologize. I was simply trying to get you clarity. I knew where you were going, and I heard the answers, and I agreed. I wanted to be crystal clear to you and to the public that we are doing a supplemental appropriation, where we're spending more money in 2016.
Well, I just... I greatly appreciate that. I think that's a clear answer to what she was asking, and I appreciate that. It is an appropriation of additional money, and there are two things we're doing. We're appropriating additional money to cover the additional money we spent, and then we're changing the budget to match what we spent.
Correct.
Thank you, so that I don't feel like I'm crazy. But, normal people, when they're doing their budget, don't necessarily get that opportunity to do that. So, I have clarity. I've got it.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion at this time. Second. You know, I have a little bit of concern. I guess I do have one more question, and that is, how are we going to avoid doing supplemental appropriations in next year in May?
Well, we try.
Are we going to end up in the same situation next May?
We could, because we don't know everything when we start.
Do we just not get done with the, I don't know what it would be called, auditing process to feel like we know whether we need a supplemental appropriation until May?
Typically, the supplemental appropriations have been done at the end of the year. We took a little different tact earlier this year in trying to do a reappropriation, and I'm not sure that that's the best structure for us trying to move money around either. So, certainly open to what you think would work for the council.
Okay.
We're trying to keep things above board and transparent as much as possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Move on to comments. Councilmember Russell?
I appreciate what you've done here in putting it together, and we are spending more money, it's obvious. I don't think there's any question there. We always have done this. We've just done it in a different way in the past. We have a new budgeting process that now makes it more apparent in a different way of what's happening. Half a dozen won, six the other, to me. It's going to be like this next year, I'm sure, and I think we ought to expect that, unless we get revenue coming in in a different way and do budgeting differently again. It's always going to look like this, so...
Councilmember Berentine.
As we're going through, if we are more clear on that we are overspending in a department or something's happening, we should make adjustments to spend somewhere less so that we're not over at the end of the year. There are other options besides doing the appropriation. I appreciate what Mayor Jefferson is saying, but we shouldn't be surprised in May about what happened in 2016. If we're over by this much, we need to have some vehicle, and I would like to see that in place, so that we're doing a better budgeting process. This is a lot of money. And if we could just be clear on our semantics, so that we're not beaten around the bush, that we've spent more money and we're changing the budget to just match what we overspent, might not seem palatable to my constituency, but at least it would be honest, and I want to be more straightforward with them on that. And so I think we kind of went in a little bit of a circle we didn't need to.
Councilmember Russell.
And I would just like to share, part of the reason I want to know where it is in the budget, and I know there is a line item budget out there, it just may not be available to the general public, is because if we keep track while we're going, and I saw that when I was attending the mayor's meeting, the mayor would ask, "So where are we on the budget, and do we have to look?" Well, that's never really come up about where we're at in the budget during the course of the year, at least that I remember. And so how can we decide, "Oh, we've been spending more money, maybe we need to cut back"? And that is the reason that I always ask, is this in the budget? Is it in the line item? Because that's how it goes over or under, so...
I can see in our monthly report, we do have that one sheet that talks about the different departments. So in this case, did the whole budget go over? Only in these two little spots, but we had underruns that we had planned in other spots, and you can see it on that individual sheet, where it was a little bit less. And so, and it's just the way I think about it, I'm sure, that the whole budget is not over. If you took a look at the total general fund that was budgeted, and, you know, where we ended up, we spent less in total. Individual departments are different.
Thank you. You know, and just to, I will be supporting this. You know, just to wrap this conversation up, you know, I guess the only way I see it potentially to improve it is just to do it closer to the activity. You know what I mean? I just worry, I feel like that, you know, enough time has gone where if you're following along, you think, hey, you know, 2016's kind of already a wrap. And so I would just advocate, perhaps, we get through this process earlier. As far as identifying overruns, cost overruns, and those things during the year, I agree that's critical, but I think, I feel fairly confident that we're on the right path to identifying those issues for this next budget cycle. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Our votes have been cast. Let the record show five ayes and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Counsel, the time is now 9:58. I've told you before that I'm going to attempt to do some triage if we start to run over. The city clerks have told me that we did not do a motion for Council Bill Four, so we're going to have to go back to Council Bill Four real quickly and take another vote on that. You know, perhaps tonight's discussion, you know, members' choice and mayor's choice could be cut a little bit short. I don't know that we have anything too substantive under manager or attorneys. Seeing them shake their head, I don't think we're going to be at this too much longer, so with counsel's general approval, I'm going to push us forward here.
Need a motion, so moved.
Second. Okay. I don't know that I necessarily need a motion, I think I was just looking for some feedback here.
On Four, we did need the motion.
Oh, yes. Is that a motion to approve Four?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Gillis? Thank you. Excellent. So now, we have a motion on the table to approve Council Bill Four, and seconded by Councilmember Yates. Again, we are going back to Council Bill Four due to a lack of a motion. Apologize there, that was an oversight, given the amendment and given the discussion that happened surrounding that item. So there was a little bit of confusion, so just to clarify, we are going back to that to vote on that. Did you have a comment, Councilmember Berentine?
Could you identify it by the...
Nine B1.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
This is the distancing.
Oh.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Our votes have been cast. Let the record show four ayes and three nays. The three nays being Councilmember Russell, Berentine, and Olson.
Thank you. Like to move us on to general discussion. Is there any council member choice? Anybody like to kick us off this evening?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
In the interest of time, as I know we're trying to get out of here by 10, I will save mine for next time.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Since we were, you know, since the conversation, the study session was so adamant about reports on committees, this last week, I attended the water, the water department's meeting, and I got to admit, those are probably some of the fastest meetings I've ever been to. If you blink, you may have missed it. EURA was canceled this week, although on that same evening, we had a community meeting presented with Tony Arnaldi, and I forget the young lady that was presenting, it was on community policing. If we could somehow get on to our community calendar, all of these types of events that might be, we would have a, I think, a better turnout, although that turnout was really, really good, and it was quite a presentation. And, let's see here, Transportation Committee met. The discussion topics was about the crosswalk, usabilitys of the alleys, art bus, are we stopping at all of the appropriate places, or is it time that we might look at shifting where we stop? Because we've got some of, some high-density buildings that have came up since the last time we looked at that. And then I have one slight editorial comment. Sometimes I feel like we have a solid separator out here in the audience, and somebody didn't put the lid on it, so...have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson? Anything tonight?
I thought you said Russell.
Wilson?
No, she said I said... I would just say that the vote tonight around the distancing, I voted no on something that I would not vote no on after we've had a discussion where we came up with a compromise, and we all agreed to it. But I did that tonight, so made it really clear that I do not believe in distancing, but, and so if somebody wants to bring something forward, I'd be glad to be a part of that. I'm not going to take my time to do it, however. But, that's what I thought I said that night, and if it was unclear, I think it was probably misunderstanding.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
The issue that came up with the EHA, the Housing Authority at Simon Center, where there were four or five women that came forward, there was some issue of some sexual harassment going on. I believe one of the women went ahead and had a case on that. They, I'm being told that that case was adjudicated, that there was probation set for the person. That person is still living in that facility, and I am confused on what's going on. So, rather than try and get involved in hearsay, and I understand that there is another complaint against the same person, so I need to know what the, what our authority is, what the rules are for EHA. I believe that there was a resident who, some people who were on council at the time actually participated in trying to evict a woman, because I think in the elevator, she used the F-word. So if we would go, if they have a rule to go after somebody for something like that to evict them, I am dumbfounded at how somebody who has been accused and apparently gone to court on sexual harassment in that building can still be living there. So, I'd like to get the rules and what we have available to us to try and protect our citizens. I don't want to do senior housing for somebody and then put these women at risk like that. They did come to council, I think, in February, maybe? Sometime right after the beginning of the year to complain to us, and I would like to know what's happened with it, and where we stand with it, and what opportunities we have to do anything. I will, I will take the time tonight to go ahead then, since that's my conviction, that I would prefer not to have distancing in the city. So, whatever it is I need to do to bring the repeal back, since it's been made very clear that we have a majority of council that would like to see that happen. So, what am I supposed to do? Is it, you want me to request it? I make a motion? What is it you need me to do?
I think we'll, you know, at the mayor-manager meeting, pick this issue up and try to get this on the agenda, to review something that the city attorney's office can put forward. You know, candidly, I'm probably thinking July, August. Is that...
I would certainly like to, given what Councilmember Olson said, that a majority of this council was not represented adequately, that we did not communicate well that night or forward enough, that we should need to do that a lot sooner than that.
If this comes back to council, we need to have a majority say that we want to bring it back for a discussion.
I am only going on what Councilmember Olson said.
I guess that's what I want tonight, is do we have that? Councilmember Olson, would you like to see this come forward?
I already told you my vote. I think the three of you need to decide whether you stand or not.
It's coming forward, then, and, you know, the bottom line is when it's going to be able to be fit in the agenda. Honestly, I don't view this as more important than what we have on the agenda for, through June at this point. So in my mind, it's got to take a backseat. You know, we did, you know, approve Council Bill Four tonight. In my mind, that makes this a little bit less of a pressing issue, and so it'll be coming forward, and this council will be seeing it. But it may not happen in an extremely timely manner. If a majority of folks think that this is so compelling, that you would like me to clear the schedule, then I'm happy to do that, but I don't think I'm hearing quite that, and so that's, I think...
You are for me. She just said what she said. I don't know if you're asking everybody, then, you were the fourth, you were the fourth vote on that, so that's up to you, if you want to stay on two sides of this. I don't...
No, again, I think I'm being very clear. I think I'm being very clear.
It hasn't happened all along. Are you on two sides? Are you either on, because without you, there's not the majority on it either, so are you...
No, I'm going to bring it forward, and I will likely support it after a public process, you know? There's going to be a process, it's going to come forward, and I just told you the timeline in which it would come forward.
I would like us not to have two more laws going into effect before we're dealing with it, so I'd like it brought back sooner.
And again, right now, my understanding is that I have some discretion over the agenda, and I just told you exactly what I'm going to do, and if, you know, other four members of this council would like to give me different direction, I'm happy to honor that. But until then, that is what's going to be happening. Councilmember Russell?
I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Berentine, please finish.
I'm, I'm sorry, Linda. I apologize. I have a huge concern that the majority of council is not being heard on this, and we don't have a majority of council if we don't have leadership. So, I'm, never mind. I would like to find out what the soonest time we would bring this back at, because June, July, August is kind of vague. Then the, just tell me, I know she's not responsible for the dates, but I do need to ask her...
Coordinate with each other.
Okay. Just, how long for the writing piece of it, just for your portion of it?
It won't take me very long.
Okay. And it is in their court to go ahead and put it on the agenda, and I would appreciate it.
It would be June 19th. That would be the earliest, because we're not going to meet the noticing period for her to get it done for June 5th.
And if we don't need a study session, then we could get it in in June.
All right. I just wanted to know the timeframe. I appreciate that. Thank you. And is it a council request for the EHA thing? Is that with you, or with the city manager? As well? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Russell?
And I know that I've already left a message for you, but I just want to make this a formal request about what's going on with IBAC. Is it Studio 420 now? Okay.
I did send you back an email today. I don't know if you picked that up yet.
I haven't.
There is a hearing date set for that, and I am just drawing a blank. June 16th.
Okay.
It's a Friday, and it said eight in the morning. And that's all the information I have on that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. We're going to move on to mayor's choice. I just wanted to give a friendly reminder that the Foundry grand opening is tomorrow at four, and then we have a date with the school district at 6:00 PM, I believe. You know, given our conver, given our conversation, it's six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six?
Six PM.
Thank you. And, given the conversation we had on the use tax issue last time, I guess, you know, I guess I just want us to have some sort of a united front as we discuss these issues with them. Are the folks who said that they didn't want to charge use tax still in that position? And can we just feel good after reviewing the memo from the city attorney's office that we're in a good spot on that? Or do we want to not talk about that? Or how do we want to handle that tomorrow? I guess I just worry about how that conversation proceeds. Councilmember Yates?
I would say that if that subject comes up tomorrow, the decision hasn't been made. That's how we deal with it.
Thank you.
Because we need to either talk about it, vote on it, whatever we need to do, but we can't tell them yes or no tomorrow.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Rubin has asked that that topic not be brought up, because her group hasn't had the opportunity to deal with it, so she is hopeful that the other items on the agenda that we've enunciated would be discussed.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that. I just wanted to be, have us prepared in case we got into another conversation like that.
Well, I had a question.
Regarding what?
That.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
I did talk to the school board president, and I, you're correct, they asked it to be taken off the agenda, so I didn't know who does the agenda for this meeting. Is it us, or have we agreed to take...
I think they set this agenda. Is that a fair statement?
That's their thing. Okay, so it is off.
Yeah.
So it just won't be discussed at all. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful to know going into tomorrow. Councilmember Wilson, do you have something?
I teach until six, so I will be late.
Thank you. City managers' report?
Yes, sir. Just quickly, I wanted to give you some updates on two economic development projects that I know are of high concern and visibility in the city. Number one is the Hilltop Motel on Broadway and Lehigh.[1668.04] Number one is the Hilltop Motel on Broadway and Lehigh. That particular project was in for a DRT last week, wherein they brought forth plans for a three-story building that has eight apartments above and retail on the main floor. 2,800 square foot retail on the main floor, which they're hoping to bring in a restaurant user. So that's kind of exciting. And the other one is long-tenured motel across the street, that's on, New London Motel